Are we ready?
Yep.
All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Rancho Palos Verdes City Council meeting for August 20th. Roll call please.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Bradley.
He's excused absence.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Here.
Councilmember Seo.
Excused absence.
Mayor Protema Alguiria.
Here.
Mayor Chrishen.
Here.
Our next item are public comments for closed session, seeing none we can move to our closed sessions items list.
Good evening Mayor and Council, tonight we have two items in closed session. The first one is potential litigation against the city relating to five settlement offers from the regional water board. The claims, the settlement offers are listed in under item one on the agenda. Number two, pending litigation with respect to the city's potential liability for remediation of contamination at the BKK landfill in West Colina.
Thank you very much. Okay, we can go ahead and recess to closed session.
Councilmember Bradley.
Excused absence.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Here.
Councilmember Seo.
Excused absence.
Mayor Potem Alegría.
Here.
Mayor Crookshank.
Here.
We have a quorum here, our next item then. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll ask Mayor Potem Alegría to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Stand right hand on your heart. Where do you begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the closed session report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This evening, we had two items on closed sessions, items one and two on the agenda. Both items were discussed and no reportable action was taken on either item, and that concludes the closed session report.
All right, thank you very much.
Our next item are the mayor's announcements.
Okay, I have a few announcements tonight. The first one, the mayor and city council of City of Rancho Palos Verdes on behalf of the entire community recognize September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people every year. An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed globally with cancer each year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded over 30 years ago by Stephen Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic branch of the Max Factor Cosmetic Family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., and Lions Club International are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, the City of Hope National Medical Center, Mattel Children's Hospital at UCLA, Long, Los Angeles General Medical Center, Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, Harbor UCLA Medical Center, Cedar Sinai Medical Center, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor hospital toy distributions, home and hospital instruction, family sailing, pet assisted therapy. It's magic, nothing is impossible, music is medicine, laughter noon, laughter is healing, KCC superstar experience, family counseling, and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that in recognition of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, the month of September 2024 is hereby proclaimed Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Rancho Palos Verdes. In doing so, we urge the residents of our community and communities around the world to join in raising awareness of childhood cancer. You want me to proceed, or do we need to wait for any video connection?
Do we have a guest speaker?
You do.
Okay.
So I'm Dr. Amy Feierstein, and I'd like to thank the City of Rancho Palos Verdes, Mayor Crookshank, and the Rancho Palos Verde City Council for supporting Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Children with cancer need a lot of support via their families medically and from the community. And raising awareness about childhood cancer is a large part of this, and that's what we're doing here today. These children are brave, strong, and determined, as are their families and loved ones, and they have to be to face this battle. Through our work at Kids Cancer Connection, American Cancer Fund for Children, and in association with the support of government, we're able to further assist these amazing children and their families. So again, thank you for honoring these children and offering your support in the battle against childhood cancer. And we can only hope that one day we will no longer need to issue this type of proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. And the next item, do we need to wait for any type of video connection, or just go ahead and proceed? Proceed? Okay. So, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're happy to virtually welcome a delegation from Sakura City, Japan to help commemorate our fourth anniversary as sister cities. With us on Zoom are Sakura City Mayor Takashi Hanaksuka and translator Emmanuel Chamblis. We're very appreciative that you made the time to join us tonight, probably slash morning.
Hello.
Hello.
The City of Rancho Palos Verdes, especially to the great members of the city council. Mayor John Crookshank, hello.
Hello.
And Mayor Potem Alegría, hello. And, and the council member Barbara Ferraro, thanks a lot. And, and maybe city manager Tara Miraney. And how do you do? Vice manager Catherine Jun, hi. This is Takashi Hanakuka, mayor of Sakura City. And this is, hello, this is Mayor Potem Yoshiobake, who introduce please. Who introduce please? May I continue?
Yes.
Yeah. I have a few words. We feel very blessed to attend this online meeting to celebrate the fourth anniversary of our sister city partnership together. Last year, at the third anniversary celebration and the great event of RPV's 15th anniversary, we received exceptionally warm hospitality. You guide us and you showed us many wonderful places in your city. We will never forget those beautiful sights. Lots of beautiful, wonderful moments. And the splendid gala at Terrania. I can't explain the words. Hmm, so good, how good we felt. I would like to express my sincere gratitude for everything. And now, we Sakura City will celebrate our 20th anniversary in March 2025. We are eager to be able to have the same face-to-face exchange like at that time, this time in Japan. Would you please come to Sakura City in March next year? We will wholeheartedly welcome you. We are friends and we are, we are a family that transcends the sea over the Pacific Ocean. On the occasion of the fourth anniversary of our sister city partnership, I sincerely pray for the further development, prosperity, and deepening of friendship between our two cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So before we share a video, I'd like to provide some information about our sister city partnership, especially for those who are, we are learning about now. Our journey began when Merlest Intermediate School hosted 300 students from Sakura City in 2001. This program set the stage for an exchange of cultures, which led to discussions about the possibility of becoming official sister cities. We learned that Sakura City is located 25 miles northeast of Tokyo with over 45,000 residents and is best known for its famous cherry blossom trees. Like Rancho Palos Verdes, Sakura City has a mayor council form of government with a directly elected mayor and a city assembly of 18 members. Despite the challenges of COVID-19, our cities engaged in virtual meetings to learn more about one another's communities and made the decision to formalize the partnership on August 4th, 2020 in California time and August 5th in Japan time. We held a virtual ceremony where we signed documents, exchanged gifts, and shared our hopes for a future of continued friendship. In 2021 and 2022, we celebrated our anniversary through virtual events, featuring live dance performances, musical showcases, and heartfelt exchanges. It was a unique way to learn about one another despite the distance. In 2023, we finally had an opportunity to meet members of the Sakura City Council in person when they visited us for our 50th anniversary. We enjoyed tours, meetings, meals, and even a trip to an Angels Game featuring Shohei Ohtani. However, the best gift was the opportunity to truly connect and understand each other's communities, forms of government, and priorities. As we mark our fourth anniversary, our bond continues to strengthen. We look forward to future opportunities to celebrate one another, especially as Sakura City prepares to mark its 25th anniversary next spring. With that, we'd like to play a quick video with some great footage of our visits, past visits, and celebrations. That was a very short video.
Is there sound?
There should be. That's probably why they stopped it.
Mayor, just give us one moment. We're gonna send it over to RPV TV.
Of course. So one difference that I learned is that they told me that their council only meets twice per year. And I said, wow, that sounds a lot easier than what we have to do. And then they told me, we meet for an entire month. Can you imagine having to wait for public comment? You'll be on in three weeks.
No, now we've lost them.
Now we have no signal.
Yeah, we lost, yeah, we lost complete connection.
All right, we might have success here.
In 2020, the City of Rancho Palos Verdes and Sakura City, Japan, joined together as sister cities. The union began from a student exchange program at Merlest Intermediate School. A few years earlier, exchange students from Sakura City came to Rancho Palos Verdes and learned about life on the peninsula.
Rancho Palos Verdes was the most fun experience I've had to date. Getting off the plane started my completely new experience. The food and servings were huge. It was about three times the size of what I'm used to, but it was very delicious.
During the visit, introductions were made between the two city governments. And after many conversations, the two cities agreed to become sister cities. And while 2020 was a difficult year for everyone in the world, the cities forged ahead and planned their very first celebration. Using virtual technology, the cities decided to make their union official at a live RPV city council meeting. That would mean the next morning for the council in Sakura City. It was a beautiful ceremony where documents were signed, gifts were exchanged, and mayors spoke about their new bond and hopes for the future.
The cities of Sakura City, Tochigi Prefecture, Japan, and Rancho Palos Verdes, California State, United States of America, have nurtured a close bond since 2001 as a school program. We hereby recognize our relationship as sister cities. The purpose of this agreement is to deepen and strengthen our friendship. The cities of Sakura City and Rancho Palos Verdes City and their respective citizens, through active exchanges in a variety of areas such as culture, education, arts, and sports, will strive to further friendships and deepen their mutual understandings for the ultimate goal of world peace.
In 2021 and 2022, the sisters would continue to celebrate their anniversary with the help of both technical departments a half a world away. Via Zoom, the celebrations included live dance productions, musical performances, and videos. Even local residents from both cities were a part of each ceremony as we learned more and more about each other and our cultures. Gifts were always exchanged, as well as smiles and laughter. It was always the hope the two cities would travel to celebrate their anniversary in person. In 2023, many members of the Sakura City Council came to Rancho Palos Verdes to celebrate their anniversary, as well as the 50th anniversary of the City of Rancho Palos Verdes.
Welcome, sister city, Sakura City, Japan, to the City of Rancho Palos Verdes.
Sakura City's citizens, Rancho Palos Verdes, please.
What an amazing experience for everyone. We learned we had many things in common, like the love of the ocean and a baseball player named Shohei Ohtani. There were tours throughout the city of Rancho Palos Verdes, exploring the beauty of the peninsula. There were meetings and meals shared. There were celebrations to attend, and there were always gifts exchanged. But the greatest gift of all was learning more about each other, our sisters, in person. Although we spoke different languages, we quickly learned that through music, dance, food, and sports, we were very much alike, and that we understood each other very well. The visit built memories that would last a lifetime. We are now celebrating another anniversary together, but this time the sisters have a much stronger bond. We're all excited to see you again, and hopefully, in person next year for your big event in Sakura City.
We here in Sakura City also eagerly await our chance to host you. We look forward to the joys of our new sister city agreement. Shall bring forth.
Happy anniversary, Sakura City, from your sister Rancho Palos Verdes. In 2020, the City of Rancho Palos Verdes--
Yeah, in case you missed it the first-- All right, well, what a magical thing, four years. And I welcome my colleagues to say a few words at this point. Mayor Protem Allegria.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and great to see you, Mayor, as well. We gladly accept the invitation on behalf of the City of Rancho Palos Verdes. And I know a contingent of our city will gladly attend your wonderful, wonderful celebration that's coming up next year. So thank you for the invitation. I hope that the contingent that comes will have a chance to see your wonderful drumming once again.
Yes, council member Ferraro.
Yes, you must promise to play the drums for us again, as you did when you came to our 50th anniversary. Yes, exactly. And it's so good to see you again. And it will be wonderful to be able to be with you on your city's 25th anniversary ceremony next year.
Mayor, if you'd like to say a few words, please.
Thank you very much. So, we will be waiting, and for you, we eagerly wait, wait, wait. And I must play the Japanese drums again.
Yes.
I will play the drum, and, again, for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I, we're very, I'm looking forward to seeing you again.
Us too. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sakura City.
It's a privilege being sister cities with you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi. Thank you from Sakura City.
Goodbye from Rancho Palos Verdes.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Bye-bye.
See you in March.
See you. And thank you. See you.
Yeah, bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
All right. Well, that was wonderful. Next item, please.
Our next item is by affirmation to move approval of recycle and emergency personal preparedness kit drawing winners Lori Gray and Patrick Ford.
So moved. Thank you.
Our next item, then, is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Ferraro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Allegria?
Yes.
Mayor Crookshank?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our public comments for non-agenda items, and I do have one request to speak. I'd like to call Fahim, forgive me if I say this wrong, Fahime Rezayat to the podium.
Come on up to the microphone.
Come to the microphone.
Come to the microphone.
Thank you.
Good evening to everybody. I came to thank you for listening to me and you trimmed the trees of the--
Oh, ma'am, if you could just adjust the microphone. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you for trimming the trees in the heart on the street and also working on the pavement and made it safer to walk. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All I want to say that. It was nice to acting because I had, asking for three years, only I wasn't in person. Then I came in person. You did it. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, in the council, if you recall, the speaker came to a meeting, a couple meetings ago, and we said, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you for taking care of it. Thank you for your patience.
Our next item is the city manager report.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council and our viewing audience. Before I start, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that it's hard to believe it's been four years since we, we entered into the sister city with Sakura City. And I remember when they first came out, and knowing in the audience, we've got a school district member, Sarah Dean, and the superintendent, Devin Serrano. It really all started with the school district and the Merlest program and they, the exchange program. And, and there was a delegation that actually came out in 20, it was right before COVID, and we met with them, and that was the beginning. But it really all stems from the school district, and so I wanted to just give a big shout out for, for being here for a different matter. But, but thank you for making this happen for us. I also, before I get into my former Luna Mohammed, if you can stand up. She, she just started with the city on Monday, right? Yeah, it was very, just a couple days ago. She comes from Northern California. She's our new emergency management coordinator. And we're so fortunate. I mean, many people were asking me, are you sure this person's going to come to the city knowing that we're in a state of emergency, we're dealing with a crisis? I said, that's what they, they, they were, that's what they desire. This is what she, and she has shown, like, she's already hit the ground running, helping us navigate, working with CalOES, LA County Office of Emergency Management, FEMA. So welcome, Luna. We look very forward. She already went to her EPC, her first EPC meeting. So, thank you, and I want just for the public to get to know who you are because what you do in emergency management is very important for the City of Rancho Palos Verdes, so thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
So I've got a great transition to my, my report. If you were at the council meeting last, the August 6 meeting, you know we were surprised by, by a trembler. And if you were watching me or you saw the meeting, you know how I reacted because my phone, which is normally during council meetings, in my pocket and in the silence mode, and same with the city attorneys, went off a loud sound. I, I know that sound. I've heard it twice, and I immediately shouted out, you know, drop, cover, hold. And I think I was under the table, and you all were looking at me, and I'm going, well, you know, if, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna preach it, I gotta practice it, so, you know. And then when the city attorney announced that, oh, it's in Kern County, I was like, oh, never mind. But, but with all, with that all said, you, the council knows and the public knows, I say this every three months. I remind the public how important it is to download the My Shake app. This app is, is a great use of technology that all of us need to have on your phones. If you don't have it on your phone, download it right now. You will get an alert if it's a magnitude of 4.5 or greater in your general, where you are at. Many people who had the app, it didn't go off that, that evening when we were here. And that earthquake was 5.7 in Kern County. And we, we felt it about 15, 20 seconds later, but it tells you, you have time, depending on how far away you are from the epicenter, to protect yourself. And that's why it's so important. But it's important also, we've come to learn, you need to check your settings, and you need to make sure that you reboot it every now and then because some people had an older version, and it didn't go off that, that evening. So just reboot it, check your settings, make sure. I also learned that you have to have, and this sounds counterproductive, but you have to have it set to give you an alert, an audio, an audio alert. So make sure you do that. This is really important. And remember to drop, cover, and hold whenever there, there's an earthquake. So, next slide. And city attorney told me there was an article about it in the Daily Breeze. Maybe if we can, we'll pub, we'll include it in the weekly report. So speaking of emergencies, and I did mention that we are in a state of crisis because of the land movement that we've been experiencing. I just want to take this moment to remind the public that if you want to stay informed on what's happening with the landslide, the city has a dedicated listserv as well as a homepage. It's rpvca.gov/landmovement. You could subscribe to get electronic notifications. And new to, to the form of communications, LA County Sanitation District has now created its own dedicated website, similar to some of the other utilities like SCE and CalWater, that, that residents can go and get the latest on, on the sanitation district. And just to remind folks, the sanitation district line runs along Palos Verdes Drive South. It's those big pipes that you see when you drive through the landslide. Many people get very nervous, even after an earthquake, people are always very concerned. We, the sheriff's department does a patrol to make sure those pipes haven't broken from, from any land movement. So if you want to stay up to date on that, please go to that website. Next slide. So on a lighter topic here, I would just want to talk about our last concert in the park. It's this Saturday, August 24, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Kendita Civic Center. It's going to be soul, blues, funk, R&B music, so please come out. This is, it's supposed to be a beautiful weekend, a beautiful Saturday. Come out, watch the sunset, enjoy your, your civic center and the entertainment. It's free. It's, it's for residents to come together. So mark your calendars. Next slide. So last, at the last council meeting, we also received a report and some information from the docents. And they, they told us all about their programming, and it was just timely perfectly because if you are interested, if, if what you heard piqued an interest, you can always register to become a docent. On September 4, it's a Wednesday at 7:00 p.m., they'll have a seminar, an open house, on what the docents do. That starts at 7:00 p.m. And if you're, if you want to become a member, you can start taking the classes the following Wednesday, and those are at 7:00 p.m., and that's at PVIC. Next slide. So as, as we're, we're being nostalgic and talking about anniversaries, we celebrated our, we're celebrating our fourth anniversary with Sakura City. But, you know, we, we celebrated our 50th last year, and we're, we're coming to an end of all the festivities. But one of the things that came out of the 50th anniversary was having an open house where we open city hall up and invite the public to come. So we want to continue doing that, so we're going to be doing that on, our anniversary is September 7, but that falls on Saturday, and I don't want to call and pay all the employees to come out. And so we're gonna, we're gonna have our open house from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, September 5. And we invite the public to come out. We'll have refreshments, get a chance to meet your staff, the people that work for you and, and, and work for the city and keep the city operating, and come see our city hall building, what, where the departments are at, and just get to know your city hall. So always welcome. Mark your calendars, and we, we look forward to seeing you. Next slide. And it is, it is campaign season, you know, the politics all over the place. So of course, here we have two seats that are opening up on the city council because the mayor and the mayor pro tem are termed out. There are some candidate forums that are scheduled that are being-- the mayor and the mayor pro tem are termed out. There are some candidate forums that are scheduled that are being hosted by the League of Women Voters, as well as the Chamber and the Council of Homeowners Association. They are held here in this in this room, the McTaggart Hall. The first one will be on September 4th at seven PM, and the second one will be September 18th. And what the city does is we also record it through RPV TV, and we air these these candidate forums on the city's website. So if you can't be there in person, you can always go back and watch it afterwards. Next slide. And you know, one of the things that came out of last year's 50th anniversary was the the first time ever RPV Run for Miles event, which benefits the city and all of our open space. It's a five and 10K. We are doing it again. We had it was a huge success last year. We received thirty five thousand dollars in proceeds that go towards our open space, our trails. We're doing it again. We're we're targeting, I think, Dan, if it's about fifty to sixty thousand dollars. We're hoping so. We want to bring out more people. It's Saturday, September 28th. The race starts at eight AM. I'll be running it. I know the mayor ran it last year with me, a couple others. I think Terry, you're you're planning on the city clerk's gonna be running. I know your daughter is, so. So anyway, please register. It it's a great it's a great it's a great morning to bring the community together. There's a lot of fun at the end. If you make it to the finish line, there's a lot of fun activities afterwards, and and all the proceeds benefit your city. Next slide. And school is back starting tomorrow. So for all those kids that are feeling anxious and having to get their backpacks ready and the parents who are excited because now their kids are going back to school. And for all of us commuters, you got to now add another 30 minutes to your commute. But just wanted to say welcome back, class of 2025. And last slide, because this is our last meeting before Labor Day, I just wanted to remind folks that Labor Day is Monday, September 2nd. City Hall is closed. And construction is not permitted unless you have a construction permit, a hall, a special construction permit. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Laura.
Our next item is the consent calendar.
Any comments on the consent calendar? Okay, I'll go ahead and move approval.
Second.
Councilwoman Ferraro?
Yes.
Mayor Pocahontas Aldegría?
Yes.
Mayor Creggshane?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our public hearing matter, item number one. Consideration and possible action to consider an appeal of the planning commission's decision to approve a view restoration permit at 29624 South Trotwood Drive. Case number PLVR 2022 dash 0010. Notice that the public hearing was duly published. Late correspondence was distributed. And we do have a few speakers in addition to the applicant and appellant's.
Very good. We'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Staff report.
Um, yes, we have associate planner Robert Nemeth will be giving the presentation. Also with us online is senior planner John Alvarez.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Robert.
Tonight's request is by the appellant Dallas Wells that the city council overturned the planning commission's decision approving a view restoration permit to restore the view from the viewing areas located at twenty 29642, 29648, and 29636 North Enrose Avenue, which requires tree trimming at the appellant's property at 29624 South Trotwood Drive. Tonight's case is a de novo review by the council. Background mediation. In June 2011, one applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Albert, entered city mediation with the appellant. However, the appellant's trees were not trimmed or maintained per their private agreement. In January 2023, one applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Albert, entered city mediation with the appellant, and they agreed to mediate separately. However, the appellant opted not to trim her trees. March 2023, three applicants and the appellant entered city mediation, and they agreed to mediate separately. However, the appellant opted not to trim her trees. February 2024, the planning commission conducted a public hearing and continued the case to allow time for the city arborists to review the appellant's trees and to reattempt mediation. April 2024, city mediation was conducted. However, except for one of 11 trees, the appellant did not agree to view restorative trimming. Planning Commission review. On May 2024, the planning commission made the six mandatory permit findings and voted unanimously to crown reduce the appellant's 11 trees to restore the views. The applicants are required to pay for the initial trimming, and the foliage owner is required to pay for annual maintenance. For the three applicants, trimming down to the yellow line restores the following views: the Los Angeles and Long Beach harbors, bridges within the harbors, Long Beach city skyline, and the ocean. This is a view from Trotwood on the side profile, and you'll note that the yellow view restorative height level is above the appellant's house, which is in the center. Appeal points. Number one, according to your city arborist, the trimming required is likely to result in the death of the three biggest trees and the destruction of the aesthetic value of most of the others. The city arborist opine that the appellant's trees will survive trimming to the view restorative yellow height level. The city arborist opine that most of the trees will lose their aesthetic value due to trimming. Because of the loss of the aesthetic value, the appellant has the option to remove her trees at the expense of the applicants. There is no nexus between tree health or aesthetics and the view restoration permit mandatory findings. Appeal point number two, our property, as well as the property of other foliage owners listed on case number PLVR 2022 dash 0010, will be worth much less when our trees are mutilated or removed. The view restoration ordinance and the view restoration guidelines do not instruct the planning commission or the city council to contemplate possible impacts on property values when hearing view restoration permit requests. There is no nexus between perceived or real property value loss and the view restoration permit mandatory findings. Appeal point number three, another triviality to consider is that we are the only house on our street without an air conditioning system. The protection of the trees has kept us from needing one. But we have an 88-year-old and a 66-year-old living at the property. Will we need to install an air conditioning system? Will be will we be able to keep up with the additional energy costs? We are too old to wait for new trees to grow. The view restoration permit does not require the appellant to remove her trees, but to trim them. Trimming the trees will result in foliage remaining on the tree crowns, thus continuing to provide sun shade. The approved view restoration permit provides the appellant the option to remove and replace trees. There is no nexus between home energy impacts and the view restoration permit mandatory findings. Appeal point number four, the applicants have already made changes in our neighborhood. Trees have come down or been mutilated. Eight properties have been affected so far, plus the city trees on General Street and Trotwood Avenue. We are no longer leafy and green. The view restoration ordinance and the view restoration guidelines do not restrict the number of applicants or foliage owners involved in a view restoration permit request. There is no nexus between neighborhood landscaping changes and the view restoration permit mandatory findings. Appeal point number five, applicants' responses were unsatisfactory. The view restoration permit case record demonstrates that the applicants have complied with the early neighbor consultation price process, finding number one, which included mediation. During mediation, the appellant's proposal to trim trees to height levels that would continue to significantly impair the applicant's views was rejected by the applicants. Although the appellant was not satisfied with the mediation outcome, the early neighbor consultation mediation had occurred, and that finding number one has been met. Conditions of approval amended. Staff recommends amending the planning commission approved conditions of approval, numbers 10 and 13. The amended conditions include the following: total completion of trimming or removal required for reimbursement to the appellant. City's enforcement process in the event that an appellant fails to comply with the conditions of approval within a 90-day window to trim or remove a tree. Late correspondence, former planning commissioner Bob Nelson, who participated in the case, wrote that the planning commission reviewed every angle of the case and concluded that the appellant's trees obstructed the views. Recommendation, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number 2024, denying an appeal, thereby upholding the planning commission's decision by conditionally approving, with amended conditions of approval, a view restoration permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Questions of staff? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Actually, but my question is, do we have a plan and a planning commission representative with us today? Just wanted to see if they have anything to add.
No.
I don't know if Chair Santa Rosa had is online or with us, for example.
He is with us, but he's not here to speak on the item.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I guess I had a few questions, and I guess what I'm thinking about is our recent issues with fire concerns and what we're being asked in our very high severe fire zones nowadays. Were trees that are within, I want to say it's 10 feet of the homes now or need to be trimmed back or removed. And I'm I'm looking at your in the report, you have the tree location map. I don't know if you want to go to that. That one right there. So I'm looking at the the house structure, which is, I guess, the gray structure in the middle. And then you look like you have a number of trees that probably are within that fire zone anyhow. I'm looking at tree five, fourteen, seven, maybe six. I know that the report doesn't necessarily address that fire hazard, but I know we do have that concern for all of our neighborhood. So what are the rough distances? If you were to use a 10-foot to the house structure, would all those homes or all those trees that with that I mentioned, would those be within that 10-foot?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out the scale and just, you know, roughly what what the distance between tree five, which looks like, or seven is probably the closest, how close that is to the home structure. What is how many feet do you think that is roughly?
Approximately five feet.
Okay. All right. And then could you go back to the one where you have the yellow trim line? Yeah. Actually, do you do you have the one where it shows the home? Yeah, that one. Perfect. So I know that that line is roughly parallel to the ground. What what is the minimum distance to the home roofline at this? How much is the trimming above the roofline? Do you have a number of that? I mean, it almost looks like it's maybe five to 10 feet.
Yes, that's a good approximation.
Okay. And and you said that the arborist said that it wouldn't kill the trees, but it would. Well, how did they say that? That it would kind of the actual shading and the look would be probably diminished?
Yes, the aesthetic value would be lowered.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much. Okay. Public testimony?
Certainly. Our first speaker will be Tracy Wells as the appellant, and she'll be allotted five minutes.
Hi, Tracy.
Good evening.
I make sure we give her five minutes on the clock. Perfect.
Okay.
Are we ready, Terry? Okay. Whenever you're ready, Tracy.
This was really, really hard for us. This whole process has been very, very difficult. And it and $3,000, that's no joke for two retired school teachers. And we we argued about it back and forth. We knew that the planning commission had already made their decision, and then we had very little chance for any appeal. But as we argued, we just came to the realization that what was happening in our neighborhood, not just to us, but our whole neighborhood, was wrong. It's just wrong. It's legal, but it's wrong. The Albert family and the other applicants that they got on their team, they have a nice view. They moved into a home with a nice view. We all looked at the photographs taken from their properties, and everyone used the same word. They have a nice view. It's nice. And at the end of the first planning meeting, when the planning commission said, okay, well, we'd like some more mediation, at least one mediation session with the applicants and the people that are being forced to trim their trees. One of the one of the applicants, Matt Misipich, he stood up and said, after after we had pleaded for the lives of our homes, for the lives of our trees. At that point, the arborist said that the trimming was going to kill our trees. He said, yeah, okay, you're right. We have a nice view. We have a nice view. And then he sat down again. They do have a nice view. They moved into houses that have a very nice view. And then they looked down at our almost 70-year-old neighborhood and said, but there are things in our way down there. Well, those things in our way, they those are our homes. Some of us have lived there for almost 60 years. We've been in our home for 56 years. We love that home. I was 11 years old when my parents bought that home. And they bought it largely because of those trees that were fully mature when we moved in. The first owners had planted them. We have a narrow strip of property. It's a very unusually shaped bit of land. The garden surrounds the house in a narrow strip on all sides. We have trees all around, except for the front of the house. And they have been our pride and joy for all the time we have lived there. I don't I we've watched our neighborhood just fall. Things that people move in there because they see the trees, they've got a leafy green neighborhood, we'd like to live here, this is a nice place to live. But you look around now, you're not going to see the same neighborhood. It's gone. Our neighbors next door, the Ensleys, that are right below the Albert family, they were the first, I don't victims, because they started insisting that they cut down their trees and anything that was obstructing their view. And then our neighbors on the other side, they lost a whole row of trees and chopped all the cypresses in half. And it it went on from there. They just kept reaching farther and farther afield. And I'm awfully sorry that they moved into a neighborhood and found things in their way. But those things in their way, they're our home. We love that home. We take care of it. Every single inch of it has been landscaped. My mother did the whole garden design, and it's lovely. And we live outdoors in that garden. That is our home. We this is important to us. And we feel that our home and our whole neighborhood has been stolen from us. You are not restoring the view of the applicants. The applicants have the view that they had when they moved in. And if they should ever lose that view because of the foliage of the neighborhood, we would we would be glad to give it back to them. At our own expense, we will trim the trees. And Mr. Mayor, don't worry about the fire. We were just inspected by the fire department. And the Edison Company comes through every single year and trims down the lines for the whole neighborhood. So I could talk for a lot longer, but my time is up.
Thank you very much. Hey, do we have the applicants here?
Yes, we have three sets of applicants. Our first are Frank and Caroline Albert. Our first are Frank and Caroline Albert.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us. And thank you, Robert, for the staff report and all the work you've put in on this permit process. I just want to say that we, you know...
I'm sorry. Could you talk into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. I just want to say that we have gone through all the processes and met all the conditions to obtain this permit. We're not killing the trees. We're just trimming them. And I think there's so many trees in front of our house that, yeah, we have a view on the sides, but right in the middle of our frame at our house and next door at Manuel Cortez and Misipicch's, those three homes all are blocked in by this set of trees here. And we don't want to take anything away from Ms. Wells or anything. We just want to lower it. And we believe that over time, the leaves will fill in. The trees aren't going to die. And they can be maintained at a level where there's a balance in that we have our view and they have their trees. And I think that's what the Planning Commission was trying to find that balance. And I just, I would say that even the three of us, the applicants, the houses on the two other sides are also affected by this bunch, not on a peripheral side, like the guy next to Manuel. He's blocked, you know, his harbor views blocked out to the ocean. But anyways, he's not on the permit. But I'm just saying that this group of trees, this bunch of trees, is just so massive and so thick that, you know, we're just trying to find a balance and restore the view. And we didn't, you know, we're not coming down to 16 feet of the roofline. It's well above the roofline, and we believe it'll fill in. I don't feel anything to say. I'll give you back the rest of your time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next set of appellants is, forgive me, Jennifer Misipicch. She'll be via Zoom, Mayor.
Via Zoom, okay.
Oh, yeah. Can you guys see me, hear me?
We can hear you, but not yet see you.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to wait to be seen, or do you want to just talk?
Um, I, you guys don't need to look at me. That's fine. And I'll be quick. I'm just here, obviously, as one of the co-applicants. And I joined. I'm not going to reiterate everything that my neighbor Frank had just stated. I, Ms. Wells did make a little bit of a representation. I'll speak on my husband's behalf. We were at that council meeting, and that's not what he had said. I think she's trying to make an argument that he had somehow conceded to this issue, but that's not the case. I think he was just, at that time, trying to maybe find a compromise, which we then tried with mediation. It didn't work. And, you know, here we are. And again, at the end of the day, you know, I know our neighbors have been fighting this battle a lot longer than us. We bought our property in 2019, and the trees have grown exponentially since then. I went back and looked at the photos from when we purchased the property, and we did have a lot nicer view. Again, cutting the trees pursuant to the order that was made would not kill the trees. It would be a trimming to the harbor line. So we have our view. And just like, you know, we're entitled to under the ordinance that the community passed years ago, I think in the '60s or so, that when you have a property in this city, you're entitled to a view. So that's what we would obviously like to maintain.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final applicant is Manuel Cortez.
Not available. Are there any testimony from the public?
Yes. We have, our first public speaker will be Alicia McGowan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi.
And she'll be afforded, how much? 2 minutes?
2 minutes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. I'll be, I'll be quick.
That's fine. Let's make sure the clock gets reset, just...
I don't have a clock in front of me, so...
Oh. Is there not a clock up there?
Oh, here it is. I see it now. Thank you. Hi, I'm Alicia McGowan. I'm the resident at 2138 Fairhill Drive. And we were part of the complaint. And we also are in the midst of trimming our tree at 2138 Fairhill Drive, once our ravens leave our tree. So along that point, the trees in our neighborhood, we have a very lively bird habitat in our neighborhood. There's, you know, lots of butterflies. We got, it's beautiful. And Mr. Albert has gone through our neighborhood, and there's a tree on the corner of our street below us that's just, needs to actually be removed. It was actually brought up at the last council meeting from him having that neighbor trim it down to the roofline. There were trees on General Street. We've lived in our neighborhood 25 years, and they were beautiful, and they lined our street. And when Mr. Albert moved in 10 years ago, he had the city must have made a complaint, and they removed all those trees. There's trees around a number of houses in my neighborhood. So single-handedly, he's gone through our neighborhood and just changed the whole tree demographic of it, which is unfortunate because I thought we were supposed to be adding trees and making things greener. And not in our neighborhood. It's actually getting more cement and concrete, like. So I just want to say that I hope that you consider the Wells', you know, proposal of, maybe perhaps they could just lace their trees or something like that so they can keep it, because it gets very hot on our side of the hill. And trees really do provide an enormous amount of shade and keep our energy costs down. So to that point, I mean, there should be consideration made for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ryan McGowan.
Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. Sorry. Just on my phone for a second. Work. So basically, in 2019, the Supreme Court of California actually did proceed a case about the current law in place. And it was said that basically this current law that's in place for view restoration is the strictest in California. As well as this current law, he did state, the Supreme Court of California did state this, that the current law is unfair, unwarranted, and completely biased towards one side. The reality of the situation is this tree law that is currently in place in Palos Fuerzas, which I don't know if you speak Spanish, but Rancho Palos Fuerzas means green sticks, is actually the strictest law in California that does limit the amount in which an individual can actually have trees within this city. The reality of the situation is the way that this has been conducted has been completely unorthodox, as well as unfair towards the current homeowners, as well as the fact that our tree was affected. Our current tree, which stands very high, and we do understand that, which we do trim and lace and have an agreement with the people behind us, actually is a, well, currently my father's resting site as I spread his ashes this year because he died six months ago. So, and we've tried to be reasonable with, obviously, the applicants and the Alberts and everyone else in trying to make an agreement. But obviously, the current law as it stands, it doesn't really allow for that to happen. It just is giving the applicants exactly what they want. Instead of using remediation or anything to actually work through these issues, the current law itself has been sued over and over again, as well as it is, was in LA Supreme Court as well, at the top court, for a complaint. And the judge made the same comment, which the law itself needs to be amended because it is a completely unfair, terrible law. It is one of the strictest in California, if not the country, for view restoration. And I just wanted to put that on the record and state that as a city of greenness. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor. If I can ask the city attorney to maybe opine on some of the citations mentioned by the speaker. To my knowledge, I'm not aware of such case law, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity to maybe respond as it relates to the status of the view ordinance within the city, since it was, it's been cited this evening.
Well, there's not any case law that I'm aware of that overturns the view preservation ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's worth noting that the voters passed this. It was Prop M, and it was a voter-passed ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further?
Would you like rebuttals now?
Oh, yes. Okay. So we go ahead and have time for really rebuttals. So at this time, we'll allow the appellant to come up first and have 5 minutes, afforded 5 minutes. So Ms. Wells, if you want to come back up.
Certainly. I'm waiting till I see 5.
Absolutely. Wait till you see, there you go, 5 seconds.
Okay. We already offered to give the applicants the view that they had when they moved in. We feel that they're entitled to that view. That's part of what they paid for when they bought their houses. They're entitled to keep that. And it's on us to make sure that they keep that view. That was never an issue. Jennifer just brought that one up out of the blue. And absolutely, I'd say, "Go ahead. Give us a photo. We'll trim those trees back to exactly where they were when you moved in 5 years ago." And the Alberts? Absolutely. When they moved in 10 years ago. Show us the photo. We'll trim those trees back to exactly where they were 10 years ago. And Manuel Cortez, he's been there about four and a half decades. We have no problems trimming from him either. He shows us photo 4 and 1/2 decades ago. We'll trim according to where they were then, because that's the view they bought when they moved in. But please, these are our homes. We bought this house because of those trees. Without those trees, it's not our home anymore. We live outdoors. I was sitting this afternoon outside, and I, like Brian said, I was watching the butterflies go through the trees, and the carpenter bee has his nest up in the carob tree. It's an enchanted world. And we've worked hard to make it like that and to keep it like that. It's all we have. It's our home. Please. It's all we have. Now, we have decided that, well, we have 3 choices. Choice number 1, we can just let the Alberts come in and just clear-cut it. And it's going to look awful. And it will take years to grow back. And then they'll just demand that it be cut again. So that's number 1. Number 2, one of the other 4 people who were the final 4 that said, "No, you can't do this," were, and I told this story to Mr. Kruichshank when he visited me, the Ferrin family. And they had one tree. And they really fought hard for that one tree. But when the final arborist's report came through, the arborist said, "Hey, you cut it down to the line that the Alberts wanted at, it will kill that tree." So Mrs. Ferrin emailed Robert. She said, "We don't have a chance. Take out the tree. We'll put in a replacement." She closed her email. She had a little cry. And then she and her partner put the house on the market. They moved out at the end of summer, at the beginning of summer. We lost our neighbors. I mean, there are other factors to moving out, but this was the final. Their neighborhood no longer existed. They didn't feel safe. And they moved out. And they moved to a home that has 15 trees. And boy, they checked that view ordinance before they signed the final papers, because they did not want this ever happening to them again. We're devastated. This is a terrible thing that is happening to us. And no, I'm not being hysterical, and I'm not exaggerating. If you came and visited our house, you would agree. We take care of our home. We have a home that the Rancho Palos Fuerzas could be proud of. People go out of their way to walk past our house. They talk to me when I'm working out in front of my vegetable garden. And I'll walk them around the back so they can see it all. I don't know. I'm sorry. And my mother's going to kill me for saying this, but when I walk past the Alberts' house, which I do about twice a day, I've got to the habit where I cross the street so I don't have to look at their house. I don't know what to say. This is, this is a terrible thing that's happened to us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do either one of the applicants want to have a rebuttal as well? The Alberts? Is that right?
Yes. Frank and Caroline Albert.
Again, I don't want to be too repetitive. I just want to say that, you know, the trees are not going to die according to the arborists that the city contracted with. And as far as going back, we have a history back to 2011 where Colleen Berg actually negotiated or arbitrated, or mediated, I guess is the better word, between me and Ms. Wells. And we had an agreement to trim trees. There were pictures and everything. And they started trimming, then they stopped, and that was it. There's never any trimming again. So we did, we've tried to work this out, and that was in 2011. And I think if she'd have lived up to the agreement back then, it wouldn't be such a drastic cut as it is now. But even with the, with the cut that the city is proposing, the yellow view line, it's not my line. It's Robert's line based on the ordinance. That line is above the house again, and it's, the trees are going to live. So it's not going to be gone, I guess. And I truly believe trees grow new branches, new leaves. They continue to grow. And I think it'll be also upon her to maintain it. And I think as you maintain it, you can trim it, shape it, and over time, have a beautiful tree again. And that's really what I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Then we have Jennifer Misipicch via Zoom.
I have no further comments, Mr. Mayor, unless you have any questions.
No, we don't. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, no other questions of either the applicant or the appellant? Okay, very good. We'll go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. Counsel deliberation. Mayor Protem.
Sure. I'm happy to start. I'll acknowledge upfront that these issues amongst neighbors and as it pertains to people's homes, I want to ensure the public that our counsel takes with the utmost sensitivity. So I recognize all of the input as part of this process. I'd have a chance to see in the neighborhood the views in question and have a chance to talk to one of the planning commissioners about the process that they've gone through to come to this determination. And as unpleasant as it may be, I do think that, I heard the word "balance" in some of the comments this evening. I would also add the word "compromise." I think there's a sincere attempt to achieve compromise and balance that's been exercised by the parties involved and the Planning Commission and staff. I commend you for the work that you've done. I know there's been some allusion to the view ordinance, but I, you know, I also want to point out, you know, the public benefit aspects of the view ordinance, which we've had in place, you know, since closely after the founding of the city, of course, that allows us to enjoy, you know, the biggest asset that we have in addition to our homes, of course, which is this wonderful and beautiful peninsula. So it's just a tool that's stood the test of time in our community. And this is not an easy case to adjudicate, Ms. Wells. So I just want to make that comment to you that my heart goes out to you and your husband for the impact. But with that said, I'm supportive of the Planning Commission's conclusion as well as the staff's recommendations for the 2 additional conditions at this time, Mr. Mayor. Those are my comments.
Okay. Very good. Counsel member Farraro.
This is one of those cases where it's never easy to make a decision. And yet, we have a view ordinance in our city because that's what the citizens wanted. And it's incumbent upon us to follow the laws that have been enacted by the citizens. And as I understand it, the trimming that will be done will not completely kill any of the trees. It certainly, I would hope, not. Certainly, I would hope not. But we have to uphold our ordinance. And, I mean, even looking at the picture that we just had on the monitor, where the line was drawn, do you have that one handy? This, yeah, the one down. Yeah. Well, that one's fine. Either one. But there's still quite a bit of tree left above the line where you see that it will be cut. And I would hope that the people who are going to cut it will be sensitive to not damaging trees beyond their ability to recover. And as I see it, we really don't have a choice but to uphold the planning commission's decision.
Okay, and I'll kind of echo what I've heard. And, you know, the reason I brought up the fire hazard is because unfortunately, or fortunately, our city is in a very high fire zone, and people need to be cognizant of the fire hazards that we create for not only our own homes but our neighbors. And so it might not be this year, but it's going to be coming soon to all of us, where we're going to be cutting trees that are within 10 feet of our homes. And that's going to affect, and do I like it from an aesthetic standpoint? Absolutely not. It's going to change the character of our city. But if it helps us with public safety and the safety of our neighbors and our public safety personnel, then I would agree with it. So I did visit the site. I don't know if we need to say that or not, but I did visit the site of the appellant and the applicants. I did have a chance to be in the backyard of Mrs. Wells' homes, and she does have a beautiful backyard. I will say that, you know, everyone would welcome having a neighbor like her to be taking care of her home and her backyard like she does. I hadn't read the staff report by the time I did my site visit, and I read the report after the fact. So I wasn't sure what we were cutting the trees to. I did ask about that. And the first impression I was given was that it was going to be to the roof line. So I kind of looked at that and kind of got a little worried about being, because you could see how much that would really affect everything. But fortunately, it's not to the roof line. It's well above the roof line. In fact, some of those trees are going to just be getting a slight haircut. I will say that that grouping of 2 through 13 on the right side there is pretty high up there. I trust our arborist is going to continue to participate in what happens and will be available as trimming occurs to make sure that none of these trees do die from this trimming. One of the things that I always look for, because our views can be very expansive. If you look out at the entire ocean and you're only blocking a tiny little strip, I would say that's not significant of blocking the view corridor. But anyone that lives on the east side, like I do, and that these parties do, they know that the ports are a huge part of the view corridor. Seeing the lights, seeing the bridges, seeing the ships, that's what makes that view amazing. And when you don't have that view, I can sympathize with that. And having been at the applicant's homes and seeing that their views were clearly, those areas were clearly blocked, to me, I felt was a significant block of their views. So I too agree with the planning commission's direction on this. And, you know, but the expectation is, is that those trees are, as they get trimmed, are not going to be killed. And that, you know, Mrs. Wells can still enjoy the shade of the backyard and for years, as long as she lives there. So with that, is there a motion?
Well, go ahead and make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
And that recommendation includes the two conditions referenced as well.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Ferraro? Mayor Potem Alegría?
Yes.
Mayor Kruichshank?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And Mr. Mayor, for a point of clarification for the public, the ember-free zone requirement by the LA County Fire Department is five feet, not 10 feet.
Just, and that's for actual, any part of the tree though, correct?
Anything surrounding a structure, and that law isn't being enforced just yet, but it's five feet from the structure has to be an ember-free, so no vegetation in that area.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification. All right, next item.
Is our item under regular business, item number two, consideration and possible action to receive an update report on the Portuguese Bend landslide and emergency hydrogris project, and a 10-day report on the proposed extension of the interim urgency ordinance. Late correspondence was distributed, and I do have three requests to speak.
All right. I'm sure the staff report will be very robust.
Yes, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So as we're transitioning here, I just want to give some opening remarks, and then I'll hand it over to the Public Works Director, Ramsey Awad. Tonight's agenda item on the landslide is going to essentially encompass two areas. We're going to report out on the usual information that we come back every 60 days, and we give the council an update on the various projects that are underway. I know the council had asked that we give specific timeframes. We didn't have enough time to do that for this report. We will include that in the next report. The other part is, we, back in October, the council adopted an urgency ordinance that prohibits a moratorium on any building in the landslide. A lot has happened since October, and we're going through the process to renew that for another year. So you're going to hear that report tonight. More, most important, the information you're going to hear tonight is very concerning on what is happening and what we're observing with this landslide. We have spent the last two months, a little longer than we thought we would have to, but we spent some time doing test bores and really understanding the condition of the landslide. And we've gleaned information that is very important for the public to understand, as well as the council, because that information is new to us. And we have a better idea now what's happening with the different slip lanes. You're going to hear about that. But what we're going to be asking the council is to approach the remediation in a different way than what was presented to the council in the past, and that has been studied since 2017. So on that out, I'm going to hand it over to the Public Works Director to get into the nitty-gritty and the details of the information that we now have from that data.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'd like to first introduce the support team that I have with me this evening. Mike Phipps, the city geologist, is here with me, and Gary Last, the CEO of Geologic, which is the project engineer on this project, is also here to support. We'll start this evening with an update on the current geologic conditions that Mike Phipps will deliver, and then the 10-day report, and then the update on the project. So that, I'll turn it over to Mike Phipps.
Thanks, Ramsey. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. So yes, I think the last report I gave to you was in the May 7 meeting. And since that time, we've obviously been doing a ton of work out in the field, continuing to evaluate this landslide, and providing another pair of eyes on all of the drilling program that's going on. So I kind of want to start off talking about just a couple of topics. You know, I'm going to talk about land movement. Some of these, just briefly cover some of the findings and talk about the landslide boundaries. And really, I can start off with what I suppose is good news. In general, the rate of land movement now has actually leveled off. And I want to be careful because, with what I say, because I'm talking about the rate of land movement. This doesn't mean the movement has stopped. It means that it's sort of akin to driving on the freeway. You know, you get on the on-ramp, and we've been accelerating this landslide since late 2022. And all the way through 2023, we've been speeding up on that freeway, and now we've reached cruising speed. So what does that mean? It means that the landslide is still moving three and a half to four and a half feet per month, but it's not accelerating anymore. So for all the points that have been monitored across the entire landslide, the overall, if you average them all out, the landslide rate of movement has actually decelerated 1%, which is a positive sign. So, you know, we kind of expect that to happen. We're three to four months out of the rainy season now. And, you know, the rainfall is the primary source of recharge into the landslide. And there's also been ongoing dewatering efforts in both of the districts. So, you know, the overall average is 1%. The range on that is, there are still some areas that are accelerating, up to 13% over the July 1 level, and some areas that are decelerating by as much as 13%. So just covering some of the areas that we've talked about before, the Abalone Cove landslide within the historical boundaries, it has decelerated about 6%. You know, but that's still two to four and a half feet of land movement. The Greater Abalone Cove landslide, or what we're going to start calling this the Altamira landslide complex, the area up above Abalone Cove, has decelerated around 6.5%. But that's still three and a half to four and a half feet of movement. Portuguese Bend landslide has leveled off, so it's not accelerating or decelerating. But that land movement has been three to four and a half feet over the last month. You know, some specific areas, the western subslide of the Portuguese Bend landslide, which includes the well-known ski jump area, seems to be really the most active area right now in terms of, it's still accelerating up to about 5% compared with last month. The Clonic Canyon slide has accelerated about 4% on average, and that represents land movement of half a foot to 3.3 feet over the last month. You know, some new points were recently established a few months ago. We put new points on outside the active movement boundaries, including a couple of points way up in the Philly Orim and Portuguese Bend reserves. We even put a point in the Valley View Groban, which is a feature on the backside of the ridge over on Valley View Road, just to make sure that there's not something much, much bigger happening. There's also been movement, you know, we've been keeping an eye on some new areas of movement. The area of Burma Road, where, you know, it comes down from Crenshaw and hangs a big switchback turn, kind of a reverse S curve. And really, that happens between Portuguese Canyon on the east and Altamira Canyon on the west. That area showed some movement for a long time, but it was kind of going all over the place and may have been error. But now it's showing consistent movement, and it's creeping at about a half an inch per week. So that is a potential new area that will expand the area of major movement, more acreage. And we think that's probably happening directly in response to what's happened, all the, you know, major tens of feet of movement that have happened further down the hill. We, some of these new perimeter points that we put in, there's one up at the top in the, I think it's in the Philly Orim Reserve. It's stable. The one in the Portuguese Bend Reserve is stable. Some of the Cal Water points up near the top, close to the Crenshaw Gate, all that is still stable, so that's good. Points on the west boundary, AB1, which is west of the Abalone Cove landslide boundary, is also still stable. The Portuguese Point out on the tip, also still stable. So there's been some feedback and some phone calls received with people concerned about expansion of this landslide. Is it, you know, can it expand further to the west? Can it expand further to the east? So I want to make it clear, first of all, that, you know, these diagrams that we've been putting up, and actually, I'm going to take this moment to note, a resident, I believe, alerted me that previous versions of this that we've been publishing over the last six months, eight months, we inadvertently labeled Upper Burma Road as Crest Road, and somebody was very upset about that. So we have fixed that on our current figures, and it will no longer show up like that. One second. So there has been very minor expansion of the area of active landslide movement, which is the green dash line on these figures. There's going to be three figures that we put up here in a minute. But the green dash line is what we're calling the area of major land movement. That expansion, which I alluded to also in May, a little bit further to the west, onto the York property, the Glass Parcel, and through the Wayfarers Chapel property. There's been a little bit of easterly expansion in the Seaview tract, really. That boundary over there, the entire landslide complex is sort of hinging off of that boundary. And it's just showing up a little bit further east. But we think it's still within the confines of ancient landslide that we see in aerial photographs, well before that area was developed. And then, you know, the most notable feature, which many of you may have seen, is the growth of the emergent shoreline off the coast of the Portuguese Bend landslide. I took this picture this afternoon at, just a little after low tide, the tide was about plus two and a half. And so we've now got this area that has uplifted out of the ocean, extending several hundred feet offshore. And the city has commissioned a bathymetry survey at our request to try to identify where is the toe of this thing off the coast, because that will help us finalize modeling it in the future. We need to know where the toe actually is. But this is fascinating, because you can see that it's uplifting all the way across over to Inspiration Point. There is an embayment in the middle of that where the water still goes in, almost to where the old shoreline is. And I think that may be the remnant of old Portuguese Canyon. I'm not sure, but that's my theory right now. So everybody grabbed on to this the last time I mentioned it. It's like, yeah, we have a new coastline. It's not really a new beach yet, but this thing continues to grow and is very interesting. So the main point I want to get to, though, is the boundaries that we've mapped so far are still well within the ancient landslide boundary as it's been mapped by other people and other agencies. So I don't think there's any cause for alarm in that regard. It's not moving outside where we would expect it to potentially move in the future. It could expand further uphill and further to the west. Everything that's between the green dash line on our maps and the yellow line, which is really the main ancient landslide deposit up there. You know, that area is going to be continuously monitored with GPS monitoring and field observations. We are interested to know if it's going to expand further uphill. Two other areas of interest, so the figure that's up there right now shows this blue clouded area that I mentioned where the Burma Road comes down. That area is creeping, and we've actually received, I've received a few phone calls from fellow geologists that are working for private homeowners up in Rolling Hills. Two of the addresses are on Centring Road, and one of them is, actually, I'm not sure if it's an address or if it's the street, but Quail Ridge Road. And so we've just recently gotten a first look at that. We were briefly escorted up there by the Rolling Hills Community Association to see the areas that they have jurisdiction over, and then we separately were able to get on to one of the private properties. But we do need the ability to spend time up there and fully map this thing in and figure out what is it, and is it related to the movement that's going on downslope? This is all happening up in Rolling Hills. My contract is with Rancho Palos Verdes. But this, you know, in the future, you know, this could be a public safety issue. this could be a public safety for rolling, a public safety issue for Rolling Hills, and so I just encourage continued cooperation between the two cities, and, and whatever help we can get to have access up there will be appreciated. We're going to continue to evaluate that, and, and if we see, you know, really we're trying to figure out if this is connected to all the movement downslope, or, or is it a separate landslide mass that's failing? And right now, we're just not sure, based on all the data that we have. So we're going to further evaluate that, and we will be reporting back to you about So the last thing I want to mention is, is, which Ramsey is going to get into much deeper, is most of the, after completing most of the E1 boring program, it's really a good thing that we undertook that program, because we did, started significantly mapping landslide features last fall, and, and we had identified, started connecting the dots and identified what looked like a much larger expanded area of movement, and started discussing that, you know, beyond what, what are the historical boundaries of these known landslides. So the boring program thus far has, has confirmed there is a, a much deeper landslide moving in the Portuguese Bend landslide area, at least. We believe that that is, is probably the ancient Altamira landslide. What we don't know is, is whether that deeper landslide extends under the entire complex, or whether, what are the movements of, say, Abalone Cove landslide are on that same landslide surface? So the, what's proposed to be done moving forward is to start evaluating that on a more holistic approach. So I think with that, that's about all I have to report today.
That's quite a bit already. Questions of our geologist, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, and thank you, Mike, for all the work you've done for the city and the report outs. I think it helped our community a lot, just understand, and of course, our council as well. And forgive me in advance, because a couple of these questions I've, I've asked before, and some of them bear repeating, because I think it's, there's, there's some benefit educationally to the public, and also, I think, reassurance as well. So I think you touched on this, but I do want to sort of re-ask the question just for the public's benefit, which is, in the past, you've stated that there's no expectation of catastrophic, catastrophic failure in any aspect of the, of the slide, and based on today's report and the slowing of the rate itself, I would assume that that statement still holds true.
It, it, it does, and, and I want to be very clear that when we say catastrophic failure, I think what's happening is catastrophic, this rate of movement, but is, is catastrophic in, in what's happening in the community. But what we're really referring to is, could there be a sudden, you know, 20, 30-foot, just one fell swoop movement? And I continue to believe that that's not the case, mainly because we've been sort of watching the behavior of this, this landslide for a long time, and it's, it's been slow and creepy, and it, it's, it's moving a lot faster than it ever did, something like 88 to 90 times faster than it did in 2019. So a lot has changed, and I, I still don't think, based on this big, long, you know, mile-long, mile-wide landslide, that, that's pretty well-defined and stretched out, that it's going to move catastrophically. I've been asked the question about what happens if we have a major earthquake. Yes, there could be, that could trigger a displacement on the landslide suddenly, you know, if it was a major earthquake with design-level ground acceleration. But, but that might be, you know, five, 10 feet. I really don't know, we haven't calculated it, but I think if we have that level of earthquake, the, the damage from the, the shaking is going to be probably equally as bad, and within and without, in and outside the landslide.
Thank you, Mike. I think that, I appreciate your definition, I think it adds a little bit of context to the conversation for the, for the public's benefit. Two, two more questions. I know we've opined on some of the pipe, pipes breaking, some of the water contribution in addition to the rain into the landslide. Do we feel like we've learned anything additional at this time as it relates to the combination of the two contributors to water going into the landslide as a whole?
That's a tough question. That's kind of a chicken or the egg question, you know, which came first? Did the water lines start breaking? Did the rainfall cause the creep movement that caused the water lines to break? You know, I don't know, we haven't done that analysis. If, if water lines were, were leaking for a long time, they would, they would contribute some significant water to the landslide, but we, we have not done any forensic analysis on this whatsoever, and so I, I'm not going to speculate, yeah.
And maybe this next question's going to force you to speculate, but I guess, you know, did, do we feel that, you know, from a geological perspective, all the rains that we've studied are the primary contributor? I feel like that's what I've understood to this point.
Yeah, I, I believe so, and, and that, that is sort of a multi-pronged answer. I mean, the rainfall, we've had wet rain, you know, really wet periods in the past, and people are saying like, why didn't it happen then? But I think that a few things have changed. One of them is that this landslide has been slowly creeping and stretching out for a long time, and opening up across a broad area, really not necessarily visible to people just walking around on the ground, but, but opening up fissures and, and cracks. And when it starts raining, that has allowed more infiltration into the landslide mass. That immediately adds weight, it raises the groundwater levels. But what we, you know, so I think that phenomenon has been going on. We, we've been noticing that areas behind the, the well-defined areas of movement had started creeping a little faster back in, I think, beginning in 2019. And now, after doing some analysis of some of the GPS points recently, I've noticed that, that some of them, which were moving in one direction, like in Portuguese Bend, everything is now moving in a, in a slightly different direction, which tells me maybe that's when the deeper movement actually started occurring. And in either case, we, we had back-to-back years of, of significantly above-normal rainfall, almost, I think around 200% two years ago, and this, this past year, 176% of, of average. So, and once that process kind of got going, and the, especially the cracks up at the top of the landslide, there are, there are major grobins that have formed up there now, just big pull-apart areas that come up right through all of the major drainages that are coming down the hill. And so all that water is able to pour into the back of the landslide, and, and that's one of the things that's allowing water to get in. That, that's been identified historically in, in past studies, and also by, by GLA in, in their studies, as a, as a major contributor, how that water gets into the landslide mass. So yes, the rainfall has been a substantial contributor to this.
And just one follow-up, final question for me, as it relates to the dry and rainy seasons and all the data that we've collected up to this point, do you have any degree of confidence we have enough data to project forward, you know, in those non-rainy seasons? Should we be fortunate to get a couple consecutive years without remediation, which we're going to talk about in a minute? You know, what would the expectation of the behavior of the landslide be? Do we feel like we can kind of start to put some guardrails around the way we think it's going to react to a drier rainy season than normal?
Yeah, I mean, that's, right now, we're, all we're talking about is we're cruising at full speed on the freeway. And until I, until I start to see significant deceleration across a broad area, I, I don't know that I can answer your question. I, I think that this, we're, we're, we're kind of back in the characterization phase now. We're, we're looking at a, a much larger, much deeper landslide. And, and Ramsey, if you can go back to the second figure, this is, this, no, yeah, that one. This one is very telling, because what it's, this is a, basically a heat map. The fastest movement velocity is in the middle, and in red, and the, the slowest is in kind of the lighter blue, blue colors. So what's interesting is, the fastest movement is in the middle of the entire complex, and and this is one of the sort of hallmarks that this thing is, really all moving is one big unit now. And then go to the next slide. So our minds are trained to, to think that green, you know, green means go and, and red means stop, or, or green is good and, and red is bad. In this case, green is good and red is bad, just preface with that. And what this is showing is the, basically the change in, you know, acceleration or deceleration. So all of the green areas that you see are decelerating, and you'll note that most of those are in the upper portion of the landslide, whereas the areas that are still accelerating are down at the toe. So, you know, people have asked me, well, what does this mean? And why, why is this happening? And I, and I think part of it is, is the, the drying out process of the landslide. The highest water pressures have now been discovered are at the toe. That is the area of, of the most significant movement and still accelerating, whereas up at the top, you know, maybe in a, in a rough sense, the landslide is drying out a little bit. So that's why that looks that way. If it were to continue to decelerate, pretty soon this entire map will be green, and I hope that I can present that the next time I come in front of you. And I certainly hope that that will happen once we kick off these emergency measures to try to slow it down. So I'm going to, I can't really go further than that right now with, with your question.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and I'm going to withhold my questions as, because I know there's quite a bit more staff report to go. Thank you, Mike.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. The City Council, as the city manager mentioned, the City Council adopted an interim urgency ordinance on October 3rd of 2023 to establish the initial 45-day moratorium on the acceptance or processing of applications, issuance of permits, and construction of all structures in the landslide complex. On November 6th of last year, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, issued a letter of approval of the moratorium, which is required for the, any moratorium of a housing, of housing production. And that approval was for the, not only the initial moratorium period, but any extensions up to the allowed two years. So the City Council then adopted another urgency ordinance to extend the moratorium for an additional 10 months and 14 days for that first full year to October 2nd of 2024, and that was adopted in November of last year. So we're approaching the expiration of that first extension, and we are looking to extend the moratorium for an additional 12 months. Government code requires that 10 days prior to the expiration or extension of an interim ordinance, that the city shall issue a written report describing measures taken to alleviate the conditions which led to the adoption of the ordinance. And this, the agenda report tonight for this item serves as that 10-day report, including all of the updates from the geologists and the various measures that the city and other agencies are taking. At the next City Council meeting, you, there will be a public hearing to, for you to consider that extension to the interim ordinance, to extend it for the second year through October 2nd of 2025.
Thank you, Brandy.
Next, excuse me, next I'll provide an update on the emergency hydroggers project. And I'll lead that off with just a reminder of the project. The project consisted of fissure infilling to prevent additional water infiltration, boreholes to validate the underground conditions, and two emergency hydroggers, which we've called E1 and E2. The purpose of the first emergency hydroger, E1, is to extract artesian water underground and relieve pressure at the toe of the slide, and E2's purpose is to intercept groundwater and prevent it from continuing to contribute to further artesian pressure. This image illustrates how the hydroggers work, and just in a fundamental sense, we have the slip plane, which is shown here and labeled as the basal, basal failure plane. And the hydroger is inserted under that failure plane and extracts the artesian pressure, which is pushing up on that failure plane and causing the landslide movement. So the idea is we get under that slip plane without penetrating the slip plane to extract the artesian pressure. But before we do that, we started with test boreholes, which reveal the underground conditions in more detail. And, and the purpose of doing this is so that we don't waste our money on hydroggers if they're not going to work, if the underground conditions are not suitable, and there are a variety of reasons that that could be the case. And thankfully, we did spend the time to do that and found very, very valuable information. As we started the borehole process, the city geologist team began to suspect that there may be a deeper slide surface than the one we had been originally targeting. And so we drilled our boreholes much deeper than we had originally anticipated, and we did find that there is a deeper surface, a deeper slip plane. We did confirm the shallower plane at roughly 165 feet below ground, and it varies depending on the exact location, but what we also found is that there's a deeper surface, a deeper slip plane, and that's at roughly twice that distance, 330 feet or so, again, depending on the exact location. The shallower slide does have fast movement, but the deeper slide is moving much faster. It's moving several times faster than the shallower slide. We did confirm high artesian pressure on the shallower slide, but also found much higher artesian pressure on the deeper slip plane.
I'm sorry, before you go to the next slide, so what are we looking at here on this slide, and can you zoom in at all?
Certainly. So what we're looking at here, and, and I just want to preface this by saying, this is just an illustration, so the values may not be exact, but the dark black lines that are vertical here represent the borehole depths. And what you can see in the orange, or I'm sorry, the yellow, it looks more like a yellow line here is the ground surface. The red line here is the Portuguese Bend slip plane. This is what we had suspected, this is generally where we suspected it would be and what we had been targeting with our hydroggers. But what you see with the blue line here is the much deeper slip plane, as confirmed by several test boreholes. And you can see the depth generally varies, or varies in certain places, but it's generally about twice the depth of the red line or the Portuguese Bend slip plane. And we still need to get more information further up, and so that's why you see this as a projection. But in general, this gives you an idea of what this looks like, the ground surface, the shallower slip plane, and then the deeper slip plane.
So that, I know it's not accurate, I know that, that blue part that goes off into the ocean there, but what are you kind of estimating that blue line going out beyond the shoreline? What's that distance? Do you, do you know yet, or?
I, I don't think we know exactly, but the, hopefully the bathymetry survey will help us understand that. I think Mike has some projections or some ideas of where he thinks it could be. And when I say Mike, I actually mean the city geologist and the team. There's a team behind.
Yeah, we, we've, we're estimating it's potentially 500 to 600 feet offshore from where the original beach was. And, and a significant portion of that is what you saw in the photograph we saw earlier here. That might have been 300 feet sticking out on that photo, but we think it could be almost twice that distance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for explaining that, Ramsey. Please proceed.
So what this means? Excuse me. So what this means is that we, it appears that the landslide is now moving under this deeper slip plane, which is the ancient Altamira slip plane. And there's no, there's been no recorded movement of that deeper ancient Altamira slip plane. This is a completely new, this is completely new and unprecedented for the city. Again, there's no record of any movement on that deeper slip plane, so this is, again, an unprecedented new scenario for the city, which means that we have to change our strategy. The strategy that we had earlier of tackling these slides individually, the Abalone Cove slide, the Portuguese Bend slide, and the Klondike Canyon slide, is not advisable at this stage, because the deeper slip plane is the one that's moving much faster. We still do need to deal with those shallower slip planes, but the priority becomes that deeper slip plane. And the individual approach to each of these And the individual approach to each of these slides is also not advisable. We need to take a unified approach across the jurisdictions. When I say the jurisdictions, I mean the city and the districts. And we need to work on the greater landslide, the, for now, the green line and potentially the yellow line at some point in the future. To that end, we have started meeting the city, the districts, the city geologist's team, the city peer review team, the districts and their geologists, to discuss potential approaches, potential solutions to the deeper slip plane. And I'll start that by saying that in an ideal world, what we would do is spend the next couple of years doing more studies, doing more exploratory borings, understanding exactly what's, what's underground. Of course, that's not an option here. We simply can't do that, we simply don't have the time. So we need to take some risk. We need to take some risk, implement some measures, knowing that they are not guaranteed to succeed, but coming up with the best possible scenario given these difficult circumstances. And so that's what the team was tasked with doing, changing the strategy to tackle the deeper slide and coming up with the best options. What the team is proposing is deep vertical wells that penetrate the deeper slide. And because of the rate of movement of that deeper slide, we know that those will shear. But they, what we are proposing is to install these deep vertical wells to relieve some of the artesian pressure, knowing that they will shear, but having them in place for some amount of time so that they can reduce that pressure, continuing with that process so that as we progressively reduce the pressure, they'll last longer and longer, and perhaps even re-drilling them in the same area where they're easier and faster to re-drill. Looking at that really as a pilot program to determine if it will succeed. And then if it does, starting with the first one, if it does, continuing with others here at the toe of the slide, in the Portuguese Bend area where we have the most information, and then expanding that program and replicating it in other areas of slide, of the slide, depending on the conditions that we find. Again, this comes with some risk, but we believe it's the best path forward, given our limited options. And this just shows the, the area that we have the information, which is a fairly limited area when considering the entire ancient Altamira slide. So simultaneously, we propose expanding the borehole program to get additional information in other areas of the slide. Again, this is just illustrative, but this generally represents what we would look to target to expand our knowledge base for other areas of the slide, for potentially expanding that program there in the future. The overall strategy must also include continuing to work on controlling the Portuguese Bend slide, the Avaloni Cove slide, and the Klondike Canyon slide. We believe those measures, the hydroggers and other similar measures, continue to be important. And onsite drainage improvements, fissure filling, localized drainage improvements to reduce rainwater infiltration. And then additionally, a drainage source study, looking beyond the, and when I say the site, what I mean is the, the green line, the yellow line, looking even beyond that at the source of drainage and determining if there are better ways for us to control that runoff and prevent it from contributing to slide movement. And so we began, we, we've been scoping, nearly completed scoping that drainage, a drainage study for that purpose. So I wish I had better news this evening, but I think based on the information that we now have, this new information that we've learned, we do need to straight, change our strategy and move forward with the recommended pilot program for the deep vertical wells. And that concludes my presentation.
And Mr. Mayor, I just want to add, as, as a reminder to the council and the public, we have been looking at our Portuguese Bend remediation project in addressing the Portuguese Bend area. We've always, it's known that there are five sub-slides that make up the greater Portuguese Bend landslide complex. And this is, this ancient landslide complex goes back thousands of years. But the movement that we were focusing on was, where it was moving the most up until the last couple of years, was in the Portuguese Bend area. And our, our, our project, and the understanding was, the slip plane was that, that shallower slip plane. We've always, there's, the geologists, the record has always shown that there is this deeper Altamira slip plane. But it's, it's, to the record, and all the data that we've had, we don't really, it's, it hasn't moved. And it started, what we believe, when we started to see this significant change in movement, the behavior of this landslide, we now realize that it is this larger, deeper slip plane that is moving, which is why our project, as Ramsey said, that we've been working on since 2017, was modeled based on this shallower slip plane, because the deeper one was not moving, has to change because there's that now deeper, and it's moving at a much faster rate than the shallower slip plane. So that's really important for the public to understand, because this is a massive, it's, we believe it's moving as one larger landslide, as opposed to the five independent. And the top slip plane, the shallower, is moving too, but the lower, deeper one is moving at a faster rate.
Got it. Questions of staff? Councilmember Ferraro.
Sorry, it wasn't on. You said that, that we're going to try just drilling straight down, but that it may not or will not last like we'd like it to. But what do, what do you think we can count on it lasting? I mean, a week, a month, or what?
We're shooting for the, the range of, of roughly a month, but there are some trade-off calculations that we're running in terms of the cost to install. What it comes down to is the size of the pipe and material of the pipe. The, the larger the pipe that we drill, the longer it will last, given the rate of movement. There are some trade-offs that we're calculating with a smaller diameter pipe that would be less expensive to install, wouldn't last as long, but you could re-drill it again. And so there's some cost trade-offs there. We're still doing those calculations. The target range is about, about a month.
And how, how soon do you think we could start doing some of this drilling?
We're, we're hoping to be able to start in a matter of a few weeks, or sooner. It's a matter of lining up the equipment, finalizing the calculations on the diameters, and getting the materials ordered.
And one of the items on the council's, is the recommendations, is to give us direction to come back with all those contracts as fast as we can.
I think we're already there. Come back as fast as you can.
You, you laugh, but we are working round the clock on this and take it very seriously. This is one of the highest priorities that we have. We've, we've got to procure, we've got, under the emergency orders, and try to streamline as best as we can and come back September 3rd with the contracts needed to get a shovel in the ground, or these, these dewatering wells installed.
It seems like, right now, we need to do something, period. I mean, whatever we can possibly do that relates to stabilization, we need to do it yesterday. So whatever it takes, whether it's our approval, state approval, whatever it takes, we've got to get it done.
Understood. And I think what's, what's important here also is, we're looking at, to relieve the artesian pressure, but there's another component of this that's very critical, too. It's dealing with surface water. We were talking about the groundwater, but there's also the surface water, as you heard from both the city geologists and the Public Works Director, with the ground fracture, with the fracturing of the ground and the fissures and the, the sinkholes. If we have rain this winter, that surface water is going to infiltrate and just recharge that water table. So separate, but looking at it holistically, we also have to be more aggressive on how to deal with surface water, and try to find some short-term measures that we can get ahead of. It's, it's, September is just a week away, and the rainy season starts in October. The, the forecasts right now say the early rainy season doesn't look like it's going to be a wet one, but.
Go ahead.
Last year was pretty dry until January, and, and then we were hit with significant rainfall.
The deluge. Yeah. So we need to get started before the rain and pray that it doesn't rain.
Any further questions of staff? I think we have several public comments. I have questions of staff. You know, we, we're talking about this in regards to, and like was just mentioned, the rainy season is right around the corner. We're still, we still don't have LA County or Rolling Hills at the table, I feel like. What, what progress have we made with the city of Rolling Hills? If it's all Big One landslide mass? Are they participating at all? I know that from a city council perspective, we reached out to them, but I, I guess, has there been any progress using LA County as a vehicle to coalesce in terms of surface runoff? And, and that, has there been any activity with LA County and their Public Works Department in surface runoff?
We, we have had, we, we've engaged, and we've been talking to LA County Public Works. And I think we, we need to have more conversations and start to look at short-term solutions that we can address the six canyons. There are six canyons in this larger landslide complex, and we need to focus on all six of them. I know the conversation's been focused on over the last few months. You hear a lot about Altamira Canyon, you hear a lot about Klondike Canyon, but there are four other canyons that feed into this whole landslide area that, that need attention as well. So we need to have more conversations with LA County Public Works. We do need to have conversations with the city of Rolling Hills. I, I'm hearing that there, there's, there's alleged cracking, fissures opening up in various areas that, I, I'm pleased to hear that the city geologist was able to get in and, and start to look at what's happening in Rolling Hills so that we can put some context, as we have to now look at this, as, as Ramsey indicated, holistically, not just one area, but the entire landslide as one big project.
And if I hear, what I heard was this second layer, the deeper layer, is the one that's moving the quickest. And that's where you get this artesian pressure that we talk about relieving. And I would imagine that water getting to that location is not just something that happened just last year, it's things that have happened over 20, 30, 40 years. It's a, it does take, doesn't it take quite a while for water to get to that location? And, and is artesian pressure and removing it from underground below that second plane more important than even surface runoff that could happen during the rainy season? Now that we're starting to prioritize what we want to do?
So I'll, I'll ask our project team, Gary Lass with Geologic, to respond to that question about the, the duration of time for the water to contribute to the artesian pressure.
Good evening.
Gary Lass with Geologic Associates. Mr. Mayor, the hydraulic pressure doesn't need, mean you have to communicate the water from the top to the bottom. So as soon as you apply the hydraulic pressure at the top side, it can impact hydraulically all the way to the bottom. So it isn't the physical movement of water, it's the application of the pressure in the system. And so it may take years or decades for the water, the physical water to go from the top to the bottom, but the hydraulic effect can be much quicker than that.
Okay. And just to be clear then, the priority of not allowing surface runoff to enter the landslide and the removal of artesian pressure from below the slip planes are of equal importance? Is that what you, you're saying?
Well, to have an immediate response, the thought is, and, and the goal of these deep wells down by the beach is try to have, reduce the hydraulic pressures at the toe of the landslide, which is where you're likely to have the most dramatic impact. When you go up further gradient, that's probably a little bit longer-term mitigation, but it certainly will help over the long term, over the next six months, year, two years.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to add to that, that it's not either/or here for the city. We're, we're directing our project team to work on both, to continue the drainage improvements work in terms of design, as well as the mitigation measures. So we look at it as both sets of solutions.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because we're going to hear from the public, and we're going to start making very quick decisions because of what we've learned with this. And, and by the way, as a fellow engineer, I appreciate the fact that we went ahead and took the steps, because as I've been telling the press many times, had we just installed hydroggers and just done things just to do things, we would have all looked bad. This whole thing has just fallen apart. Our city does not have tens of millions of dollars to just be throwing at a problem. We're not a huge city like that. Our annual budget is 35, 38 million a year, and, and these hydroggers each are 5 million each. So this is not something that we, is a, a small issue for us. So it, it's very important that we get it right, and it's very important that we listen to engineering solutions and not just, you know, get, say, hey, let's just do something for the sake of doing something. So I appreciate that. But on that flip side of it, as things are evolving and changing, and I know FEMA has been in contact, we're in contact with them all the time, this 23.1 million, the funding, the project, all this thing kind of dissolves and then gets recreated from the ashes? Or, or is FEMA going to still be supporting us with some grant funding in regards to this? Because it sounds like we might be having some pretty big capital outlays after this discussion tonight and further discussions of monies that we might not necessarily have. So I guess that, that's the question, is I, where, where does that stand? Because I, I don't think we've gotten any funding from anyone at this point. Maybe the city manager can address that, and then maybe Ramsey can talk about the FEMA project.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I can.
Go, go ahead and talk about the FEMA.
We've started the conversations with our partners in Cal OES and FEMA about what this means for the project. And generally, the general approach would be, excuse me, you reconstitute the project. I don't think that's necessarily how they're looking at this. We've applied for a number of grants from different sources, through different parts of FEMA, as well as congressionally directed spending. So we have a number of grant applications, as do the districts. And I think what we are, are asking now, or not, I think, what we are asking from Cal OES and FEMA now is to look at that holistically, look at everything we've applied for, look at the priorities, and, and see what we can do here to make things work more quickly.
Okay. Did you want anything?
I, I know you asked a question, whether we've received any financial assistance. The city has not received any financials. We've heard commitments, we've, we've received pledges, but as of today, we have not seen a single dollar from any of the, our branches of government. And, and we, we continue to correspond, and we continue to ask for help, not only for public assistance, but as well as individual assistance.
Okay. Last question, just because it needs to be a part of the mix. We were talking about one big landslide potentially, instead of five multiple ones that are acting independently. Are, are these landslide abatement districts needed at this point? Or should we start looking at just one entity to be overseeing the entire landslide complex?
I, I, I think that conversation may need to happen sooner than later, but at this point, as, as indicated in the staff report, we need to write what's in place now in order to keep things moving, we need to work very closely with our two geologic hazard abatement districts. And, and as a sidebar, start having those conversations about bringing, perhaps, taking the entire geographic area of the landslide complex and creating one geologic hazard abatement district.
Oh, and just to be clear, I mean, the two abatement districts have been great. I, I guess my more concern would be, if we had these separate entities, does that trip us up as we move forward in post-haste over the next several months or, in time? And that, that would be my only concern, that, you know, we trip each other up and versus working as a team. And I know we've been working as a team so far, but do you see any hiccups having these separate at this point?
I, I don't. We work very closely with both districts, and, and the, the districts are, have a slight advantage of the city because they are a geologic, they get, they have certain exemptions from permitting requirements because of their status as a geologic hazard abatement district. So no, I don't, I think we work very closely, there's constant communication with both districts.
Okay, fantastic. Mayor Protam, you have questions?
Yes, and actually, I'll just make an additive point. I know we have speakers, I want to get there. But to the point of, of cost, you know, my request would be going forward that we incorporate a tally of those costs. I know that it's coming from different sources, but to me, this is, you know, long underway. And, and because of the nature of the pledges and the grant that we're expecting, I think we need to have more transparency, more tracking, not just for the council's benefit, but for the public's benefit, and also to continue to tell the story to all levels of government that we've requested for, for a long time to get support, just to continue to, to go to them and say, we, we need your help. As, you know, I think that the- As, you know, I think that the public, as well as our county and state officials and federal officials can start to better understand the financial impact of us as a small city with a, you know, tight operating budget, some capital money. But that could be consumed very quickly with some of the amount of work that we're describing. I think we really need, I just want to underscore that point. I think we really need, it doesn't have to be every single report since this is a consistent council item, but I almost feel like every quarter, we need to have a consistent accounting of the costs related to this issue going forward.
And we have been calculating and keeping track, thanks to the finance department under leadership of the director. We've been calculating and keeping tabs, all the invoices that we're paying, any, all the expenses we're incurring related to the landslide, particularly since the rain events of 2023. Because one of the reasons is we have requested disaster recovery funds from FEMA and they require that we give cost estimates. And those cost estimates can go up based on how much work you have to continue to do, respond to the disaster. So we could also build that into our 60 day report where we can give you.
That's the request, yeah, and I'm aware of the internal tracking, but I want to make sure, because we've appropriated funds for, you know, the hydroggers. We've taken certain steps in our budgeting process. But, you know, from quarter to quarter, because of the nimble nature that we're going to have to make decisions to council, I think we just need to have a really clear handle on those costs overall. And when we, and hopefully soon, we'll be getting support from elsewhere and we need to account for that as well. I think that's all I wanted to add, thank you.
Thank you. Public comments, please.
Our first speaker is Jeff Bastler.
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. Hello, Jeff Bastler, I am president of Abate of California Local 19, and I'm a member of the State Board of Abate of California. We are the leading motorcycle rider rights organization in the state. We have a publication that comes out monthly that we have a nice full page write-up on what's going on here. And it has become an interest because of the closure of Palos Verdes Drive to motorcycle traffic. I understand the scope of what you're dealing with is huge. You've got houses losing gas, you've got power threatened, you've got a lot of stuff going on, a lot of attention needs to be made or paid. But our members are very interested on what's going on on Palos Verdes Drive, and they don't want you to lose sight of that. We're looking at this as a precedent-setting situation in the state where a road has been taken out of our right to use it. I understand you're not enforcing that currently, it's an element of liability. But the issue that was just before this, the deciding factor of your vote was what's on the books. So that can change at any time. And before you're pushing for extending this out beyond the six month period, we want to make sure that that gets a thorough review and considered, not just forgotten with everything else going on. That's the main thing I wanted to point out today.
Thank you.
I'll be back next month.
Our next speaker is Nikki Nushkum.
Hi Ramsey, would you mind stop sharing your screen real quick? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the council and staff. I have three items that I would like to bring up. One, it's regarding the whole situation with the landslide, as you've heard from the staff and the city geologists, that it's not a pretty picture. Unfortunately, given what I have been able to gather, that the precipitation levels are expected to be at normal levels for this, for this season. Based on what we found in the city staff report, the Altamira Canyon landslide is moving at a rate of 50 feet per year. I appreciate the staff's paying attention to the urgency and wanting to drill vertical wells to try to reduce the hydrostatic pressure and whatnot. But the problem is, as Councilmember Ferraro mentioned, we don't have time. And people like myself are going to lose our homes. Some of us have already lost our homes. I will not be able to get in my house, I'm already making plans to move out of my house. So as y'all are planning on drilling wells, we also need to be able to figure out where to live. And getting discounts to Terania or staying at the, what you want to call it, in San Pedro, at the Salvation Army? It's not a viable solution for us for potentially months, if not years to come. So we would like for you to pay attention to that and have a serious plan, because this is coming and it will impact you and it will impact us. Next slide, please. The other item I want to bring to your attention is the condition of the sewers in Seaview. The situation is deteriorating and deteriorating fast. We have sewer under people's homes. This has resulted in a number of homes suffering from rodent infestation. I provided some pictures from some of the neighbors over here for you. The LA Public Works was there earlier today, they dug up a portion of the street and the whole neighborhood was engulfed in the smell of sewer. They quickly removed the material and took it away. I know they're watching, someone from the Public Works will be watching this. We would like to know the results of those soil samples, because you cannot per state and federal law dispose of those without proper sampling. This is a safety issue and now we are at risk. And the last slide is requesting for, what are we going to, what are we going to do? What are, what are you going to do over the next 60 days? Again, I go back to what Mayor you said and Councilmember Ferraro said, what are we doing? And I am not sure we know how the next 60 days are going to look like. I know the question was asked of staff to provide their plan by the council in the past, and we have yet to see it. I would appreciate council, city council for continuing to press on that, because that's important. It's important to the residents to know what are we going to do? Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sheri Hastings.
Hi Sheri.
Hi there, thank you. I have some questions probably for the geologist.
If you could just go ahead and state those questions and maybe he will write those down and after we're done speaking.
First question, is the, is the water, you guys keep talking about rainwater. We're not just talking about rainwater, we're talking about rainwater that turns into storm drain off for hundreds of homes that the city signed off on draining that storm drain off into Altamira Canyon in 1982. The city did that to us. What are you guys going to do about that? Because you guys are causing a lot of the problem with hundreds of homes and miles of roads draining into Altamira. I haven't heard any solutions yet for that. What are you going to do about that? You guys signed the paperwork to make that happen, and that's part of the problem. I want to know, is that storm drain off running into Altamira part of this deeper slide thing? Nikki once described it to me as a bowl of fruit, with the bowl being the lower slide and the apples and oranges being the different slides on top of that lower slide. The city signed off on that Altamira Canyon drainage, is that causing this deeper drainage? Question for Mike. Number two, why hasn't Kelvin Canyon been drained off yet? Talk about artesian water, that's 8 million gallons of water a year. 8 million gallons of water still running, we complained about it three years ago. A-Clad has done nothing, except for we put some pipes in with volunteers at my house, but we have not gotten any answers to that. That's still 8 million dollars, 8 million gallons of water, what is that? 64 million gallon, pounds of water a year going into the slide for three years now? You guys have done nothing? And the third thing is, there's a hydrant, I talked to the residents up on Burrell and was at Park Place. That hydrant is, that went for eight hours by cow water. Somebody came with a bulldozer and diverted that creek, which is what's causing the problem with Kelvin. Still, they're still seeing things up there and they're seeing movement up there on Park Place and Burrell. So you guys are seeing that higher movement up there already. And you guys, I'm just not hearing that you're doing anything about it. And I'm wondering, this deeper slide, what's the cause of that? Is that also rainwater? That's it, thanks.
Thank you, okay. And I don't know if staff wants to answer it now or come back with answers, whatever your preference is.
I think we're going to have to come back with, I mean, that's a question that keeps coming up and we.
No answer.
I'm sorry.
We keep asking, what are you going to do about it?
And, right, and so we need to go back and continue to look at, I mean, this, this slip plane, this deeper slip plane, the Altamira, she's asked, Sheri Hastings is asking, is this drainage contributing to that activation of this, this slip plane that hasn't moved for, for decades? If not longer than that, so we still need to look into that.
Okay, and that would be part of this drainage source study that you, okay, got it. Now, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Eva Albucha via Zoom and voicemail.
Hi Lucas, if you can play the voicemail, please. Mayor, I have it on my phone, if you are okay with me playing the recording.
This is Eva from the Seaview.
Absolutely, I think we did it last time, as long as everyone can hear it.
Good evening, this is Eva from the Seaview Track, talking about agenda number two. Good evening, City Council, Mayor Ara and Ramsey, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. The landslide has been a long-term issue and it's something that's ancient. And I don't understand why we are not better prepared with utilities on having them audited in the past and had stronger ties with utility companies prior to this emergency status of October of 2023. I don't understand why we are still having flooding issues with cow water this last weekend and we have this daily happening. We should have been past this. We send satellite dishes to Mars, but we cannot fix water. I don't understand. Gas lines are leaking every day and they're just coming up with a plan 11 months into the emergency plan. Why are we just coming up with plans? Same with Edison. We've been at this, we have reported the poles on the canyon of Klondike. And we are still not having any kind of results of getting those poles moved and other plans going on. Again, it's been, it's 11 months being in emergency status and we're just coming to the table with blueprints and engineering. This is not acceptable, this is not a third world country city. We pay our taxes, we have 15,312 households in Rancho Palos Verdes. That's a large contract. If we took it at $100 per home being charged for gas, that's a $1.5 million contract. With water, you double that and with taxes also, and we are not living with utilities. We need to shop this. This is something we need to shop for the entire district of the 15,312 homes, because the utilities have failed on infrastructure, they have failed on providing us services. And we're going to sit idle and say it's okay? It's not okay. This is not acceptable and we need a plan now. And we need Portage's Ben to have gas back on. And Seaview Track should not be waiting for electrical and gas to be shut off. We need help. And what we have done so far, accomplished in 11 months, is not good enough with utilities. You need to build stronger ties with them and we need to be more active. Yes, you are meeting with them weekly, but what has that got us? We have still leaking gas lines, we have gas lines that haven't been moved, we are still flooding our homes and losing neighbors. Please help us immediately, thank you very much.
No more public comments, deliberations? Mayor Protam, you want to start?
Sure. I think we've touched on some of the points I wanted to add tonight. It's been, it's been a long road and I know today's a shift in that road because of what we've learned from the, from the borings. You know, so I do agree with the mayor's earlier comments about the value of the work that we've done and the fact that we really need to ensure that that remediation, those remediation steps are going to be impactful. I, I do agree with some of the speakers' feedback. It's also been my line of question is along with my colleagues, and I know it's, it's an ever-evolving situation. But we just need to do more to be clear to the public about what we expect to do next. And I know that's a difficult feat. We of course are one entity and several that are part of this effort, but I do think we've taken the leadership to get out in front of this, which I'm proud of. But I do think we need to do more to, you know, talk about those milestones that are in front of this. I think Ramsey, through the duration of the discussion, you touched on it. So I mean, I know there's, the next steps are clear, but I think we need to begin to communicate in a way that gives people expectation of when and how and what's, you know, what's coming next. With the big caveat, of course, that things may change along the way. But these updates are for a purpose. I think we've been reluctant up to this point to, to kind of state, you know, those expectations of what's happening, but I just think we need to do more. So as I look at, I'm not going to jump ahead on my motion yet, but as I look at the six recommended council items, I have three that I would recommend adding after we get feedback from my colleagues. One is what I spoke to earlier, which is a number seven, could be requesting a 60 day financial report for any landslide-related activity to accompany these updates. The next one, number eight, would be, as I just mentioned, you know, clear timeline for the remediation efforts. You know, that might have to come in smaller increments because of what we're learning, of course, I understand that, I think the public understands that. But I just think we need to see that remediation plans and next steps more clearly articulated and outlined. And I actually thought Nikki made a great point about housing assistance. I honestly don't know the answer to that or where that may exist. I suspect that talking to the county may be helpful in this regard. But I do think we should do an evaluation of what the county or state could have to offer as it relates to housing assistance, temporary housing assistance for the public in this area. So I'd like to see that come back to this council, you know, very quickly, so we can begin talking to the public about what resources are available to them while we're trying to work fervently to solve this problem. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, those are my couple of additions. I do appreciate the work and I know, are you commented, and I can attest to the public of the amount of work our staff is putting in and how much this has consumed them. So I'm hopeful that with that, working fervently and working in collaboration, we continue to be respectful and continue to voice our gratitude, of course, to you all for the work that you are doing. But we just have to keep working as quickly as possible to understand this landslide. But also, I agree with Ramsey, your comment that we just have to start taking some action, especially if we have reasonable anticipation that it's going to have a positive impact on the movement. Let's do it. And anything you need from the council, of course, let's continue to come back on an urgent basis. Thank you.
Good comments. Councilmember Ferraro, any comments?
Well, you pretty much said what I was thinking. We really need to do something now and we need to get started. We can't keep studying and studying and deciding and deciding. We just need to do something and get started yesterday. And pray for no rain for a while anyway. But we've got to get this going, whatever it takes. And also, I think we really need to rattle every cage of the people that have said they were going to help us and that they've said that there's money available from the county or the, you know. They've pledged money, but we, as of yet, don't have one single penny of it. And we need it because we need to get. And we need it because we need to get going with the work. And I know we had thought that we would have a couple of drills in the ground by now and then we find out that they wouldn't really do much good because they were too shallow. So we've got to get something that will get down to where the water is before there's more water on top of it. That's it.
All right. Thank you for those comments. So, I mean, I hear it over and over and I'm out a lot, as people know. I talk to the press all the time about this, trying to talk to, and not just the public agencies, but we've also been reaching out to the private sector. But we're stuck with these utility companies, they're basically monopolies, as we know. We don't get to choose who our power company is, we don't get to choose who our gas company is, and so they're our partners and we need to stay, they need to be our partners throughout. And I know that they've been out fixing things, but we need them to also help. It shouldn't be me reaching out to Elon Musk to get help about alternate power. It should be Southern California Edison figuring out how to get alternate methods to get off the power grid. They know that these power lines have been stretching and breaking and they know our residents are, there's 400, 500 residents at risk. I shouldn't have to be reaching out to Tesla to do that. It should be Edison coming up with solutions for us. You know, where's the CPUC? I hear over and over again, people say, you're a rich community and why should we help you? I hear that all the time. You're rich, you can handle it yourself. The governor hasn't even been here. He's out picking garbage up from underneath underpasses, but he has not spent one second in the largest landslide in North America. We have a number of seniors that live out there that have their life investments out there in their homes. They're never gonna get that money out and if their homes fall and fail, they're out. What a nightmare for that. Those people can't afford to do anything except basically be homeless or hope a relative takes them in, or a friend takes them in. We're not a wealthy community when it comes to that and honestly, we're a pretty modest community. The value to the homes are very modest, square footage compared to some of the homes on the West Side. A lot of these people moved in back in the 50s and 60s and 70s and bought their homes when they were only 20, 30, $40,000. There were people that were engineers and people that were entrepreneurs, but not necessarily wealthy people that have billions of dollars. So we do need that help, but honestly, I don't know if I expect it anymore. I, you know, we've asked over and over and when we say we're doing nothing, that is not true. Our city is doing everything, but the problem is, the problem is bigger than our city. Our problem needs help from our utility companies, we need help from the county, we need help from Rolling Hills, we need help from the state of California, we need the federal government. Where's the state geologist? Has he been here once? I don't think so. It's the biggest landslide in North America and he's monitoring it from Sacramento? I mean, my God. And then we're up here tearing each other, at each other, saying, why aren't you doing something? We're doing stuff, we just have, we only have so many limited resources. You got these people over here that are basically giving up all their hours of time to just focus on this. All of our other city projects are basically on hold. We have 42,000 residents and they're all sympathetic, but the entire city is on hold trying to fix this problem and we wanna fix this problem desperately, trust us, but we need help. And that's what the message that I know we've been trying to say over and over again. So when people say, well, you're just a wealthy community and you don't need help, that's a bunch of BS. We are a donor city. So much more of our tax dollars go to Sacramento and the Washington DC than ever come back. We should all be pretty damn resentful at this point, honestly. And if, people aren't getting pissed at not just the city council here, which is trying to do everything, but Sacramento and Washington, I expect you to get on the phone tomorrow and start getting angry. That's how we're gonna solve things, because they're not listening to me and Ara ask them politely over and over again. They need to hear from the residents and they need to hear from our neighbors, we need to hear from the other cities, other people in LA County. I've had other mayors in other cities ask what they could do to help and that's great, but that's very rare. I can tell you right now, I grew up in El Segundo. If something happened there, I would say, what could we do to help El Segundo? That's what neighbors do. So I wanna add one more item to what the Mayor Protam, I think we need to add to this council action tonight, we need to be more aggressive. We need the Corps of Engineers. You know, people talk about building bridges, it's a mile wide, you can't build a traditional bridge, but the Corps of Engineer has solutions. We need them. We need our staff to just, and not just our city staff, we need our whole community being aggressive with outside help, because we can only do so much. I know one of the speakers said we need to make friends and have more influence. We try our best. Honestly, some of you people in the community have way more influence than us on the council. I've met many of you. You guys have a lot of influence and you, maybe you don't realize it, but we need your help. And so that's my plea, so I would add to our motion tonight that we be more aggressive. We tell Edison, we tell the gas company, we tell all of our utilities, we tell the Corps of Engineers, we tell all these people that should be helping us, get off your ass and start helping us. I mean, what's going on? We're, we're at a point where we're in a critical mass. We've learned from the engineering, we've studied it, we know what's going on. We're gonna start spending some serious money and there's no guarantee of anything. But if it moves so quickly that we have to move people out of there, they're gonna need to have homes, they're gonna need to have places to go, and we gotta keep that road open, because if you close that road, you condemn, not just the Portuguese Bend area, you're condemning many of the homes in that area that are outside of the landslide area, because you can't get emergency equipment there anymore. So it'd be too unsafe to live there. So it's not just the homes in the landslide area, it's many other homes, 15,000 vehicles, it's our utilities. So I think we should take tonight and maybe step up our actions and be more aggressive and, and, you know, our staff is great, you guys do a wonderful job and you try to do things by the book in the right way and we appreciate that, but we also, I think, we ask, we need help from everyone at this point, not just our staff, everyone, please. I mean, that, looking at us as a rich community that doesn't need help, we need help. We're not a rich community where we have unlimited amount of money and the people that live there, 25, 30% of our residents are seniors, they don't have an income anymore, they basically get social security or their retirement, they're out of money, so we need help. So I guess with that, you wanna proceed with your motion?
Very well said, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, Ari, do we, do you feel like you have enough clarity on the mayor's final addition to the three I added earlier?
Yes, if you're gonna make a motion to include the four items that you're adding to, to the so motion, yeah, and I've got it down, I think we've, we've got the clear direction. I do wanna say that I, in terms of the Army Corps of Engineer, I have had conversations with the Southern California Division. What's very interesting is, and that's a federal agency, they cannot be activated unless the state requests it. And so there's this bureaucracy that has to happen and as, as you know, the council and the public, we sent letters asking to activate and to initiate these conversations and these agencies to help and we still have not heard anything in response to that.
And this is exactly what I'm talking about, that our city has tried to follow every path, bureaucratic path, to go between all these different agencies and we get this sort of thing. The answer is, oh, we can't do this and we, you gotta do that and you gotta fill this form out. My God, I mean, what's happened to this country where we have to have this sort of bureaucracy? Our city's trying to solve a major problem right now and you guys have done everything right. We just need the others to start looking at this problem as human beings and not as bureaucrats, so that we can actually get the problem solved. And I'm sorry, we can't take any more public comment, I wish we could, but that's not the protocol. So with that, you've got the, I'll second the motion.
Councilwoman Ferraro?
Yes, absolutely.
Mayor Protam Alegría?
Yes.
Mayor Krickshing?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our item number three. Inflation and possible action to take a position on the Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District classroom repair slash student safety bond measure. Late correspondence was distributed and I do have two requests to speak.
Hello, good evening.
Wow, you guys had to wait through all that.
Thank you for hanging in there.
That's okay, I, I just wanna start by acknowledging, you know, the suffering of our families in this community around the landslide and, and this is a really important issue for our entire community, so thank you for the presentation and we're happy to be here and, and listen and hear the concerns of our community and also to partner with the city in any way that, that might be appropriate. You know, we are here to support the city as the school district and I'll just introduce myself. I'm Devin Serrano, I'm the superintendent for Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District. Tomorrow is our first day of school and I'll introduce, I have with me board member Sarah Dean.
Good evening, I do serve on the Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School Board and I am also a resident here in Rancho Palos Verdes, so I'm very grateful to be here.
Thank you so much, both of you, for coming and staying, hanging in there.
Yeah, thanks for staying this whole time.
It's our pleasure to be here. So I do have a short presentation, I promise, short, on our bond measure for November of 2024. We recently received the letter designation, the bond measure is Measure SOS, as in save our schools, and that is what we're here to, to share with you tonight. So just a snapshot about our district, most of you probably know this, but we do serve approximately 11,000 students in the four cities and the unincorporated area of the peninsula. We have two early childhood centers, 10 elementary schools, three intermediate schools, two comprehensive high schools, one continuation school and a distance learning academy. And our student achievement continues to rank at the very top of the local, state and national levels. In fact, last year, our district was ranked number six by the Niche Ratings. We're very proud of that, however, the, one of the only factors keeping us from being number one, I like to say, is around our, our facilities. So that's what we're focused on, one of the many things we're focused on here tonight. So our schools are in urgent need of repairs. The average school in our, in our district is nearly 60 years old. We have leaky roofs and deteriorating infrastructure, such as plumbing, electrical, heating and cooling systems that need repairing or replacing. Last year alone, we had 45 classrooms and school facilities with leaky roofs. The rain definitely impacts our schools. We have water intrusion, mold. Some of our schools were built so long ago that our underground pipes and infrastructure are failing. We have gas leaks, water leaks and sewage backups as routine incidents in our school system. Last year, we did have a power surge at Mira Lest during one of the heavier storms. That melted the outdated electrical panel and closed the school for three days to, to learning and it resulted in the school on a generator for the remainder of the school year. And in fact, we're opening the school year tomorrow, continuing to be on that gas generator. We do have plans in place and a timeline to remedy that within the next few weeks and hopefully get the, the school back on the grid, shall we say, but it is quite a crisis we have there. Can I go to the next slide, please? Thank you. Most of our classrooms and labs were built just truly for a different era in education. While our schools look pretty good on the outside, we've done a good job with the landscaping and the paint. If you have a chance to actually visit our classrooms, you'll see infrastructures like you're seeing here in the photograph. Our science labs haven't been updated in 60 years and many of the updates that we're discussing tonight really are needed to provide access to, to just high-quality learning and to continue with the, the good reputation that our school district is known for, including the areas of science, technology, engineering and mathematics. Next slide. So we are looking at a plan for the future of our school district and we recognize that we have, again, significant needs. We have partnered with architects, our facility experts, our parents, our teachers, our staff, our students and the community. We conducted a thorough needs assessment from 2017. Last year, we updated that, it's called the Facility Master Plan. It's available on our website and it details comprehensive needs at every single one of our school sites and has also cost estimates for each of the projects. And again, that's available online and the website is there for anyone interested in reviewing the full master plan that was updated last year. Next slide. So important to note here, similar to the local emergency that you're navigating around the landslide, the state of California does not provide dedicated funding for facility repairs. So all of the infrastructure, the large facility needs that we have, have to rely on voter-approved local bond funds and this is in fact how all of the schools in this community were originally built. This is how any new school in the state of California is built, is with local bond funds and any significant repairs come through those local bond funds. And here in PvP USD in our community, the last bond measure to fund repairs and upgrades, it was almost 20 years ago now that we've passed a local bond measure. And so those funds were expended long ago. The costs identified for our aging schools is well beyond what can be generated by a single bond measure. And so we have developed a tier of high-priority projects. Our total facility master plan, the cost estimate on that was about $1.2 billion and what we've proposed and what we've designed is really looking at, what is the bottom tier of that, that's just most critical infrastructure needs? What would that cost and then how can we generate that with a bond, a local bond measure? So we can go to the next slide, please. So in June, our Board of Education voted unanimously, 5-0, to place the Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District Repair Student Safety Measure on the November 5th election or the ballot. It requires a 55% voter approval and it would provide 297, upwards of 297, 800, 1,800 million, sorry, in locally-controlled funding to complete the most urgent and high-priority investments. I recognize that that's a large number when you're looking at it, 297 million. And what I will say is that that will cost the average homeowner in Palos Verdes $300 a year, so I think that's important and that is based on the average home price of being $1 million of assessed value. So the, the measure that you see there on the third bullet would cost $29 per $100,000 of assessed value. So important to note that the assessed value is different from the market value of one's home and you can find that on your tax bill to really kind of do the math and see what that would cost you, but for the typical homeowner, and that's the median home price in this community, it would be $300 per year is the ask. We are looking at and we have committed to using a shorter 20-year bond issuance to reduce the interest cost payable over the term of the bond, the life of the bond, and thereby reduce the overall property taxes paid by local taxpayers. This was something that we heard through our community engagement that was important to our community and so we have gone with the lower 20-year bond issues. Next slide, please. It's also important to note that we have the lowest bond tax rate in Los Angeles County. I believe when we were here earlier in the year, we shared this with you. So among all of the unified school districts in the, in Los Angeles County, we are dead last and people ask a lot, well, why are you last? How can that be? We are a wealthy community, we support our schools and that's because in neighboring communities, they have passed local bond measures and whereas this district hasn't passed anything since 2005, so others are having higher increases in their tax rates, PV is staying at the bottom. And even with this new bond measure, if it passes in November, we should hopefully say when it passes in November, our bond tax rate will be well, still below the LA County average. And the next slide. Can we go to the next slide? Oh, thank you. And so our funding priorities are here. These were generated directly from the polls that we conducted. The district did conduct two independent polls by two different groups, two outside groups who conducted independent polls to really hear from voters what was most important to them about a proposed tax measure. So these are the priorities, it's around repairing and replacing leaky roofs, fixing our failing pipes to prevent It's around repairing and replacing leaky roofs, fixing our failing pipes to prevent sewer and gas leaks, fixing inadequate and failing electrical systems, like the one we mentioned at Mira Lest, repairing failing classrooms, restrooms, and school facilities. If you've spoken to any of our students who might be in middle or high school, they'll tell you, a lot of them don't want to even use the restroom during the day. They will wait until they get home, and that is not a good thing. We want to make sure that our students are feeling safe about going to the restroom because they're clean and well-kept and in good repair. And finally, replacing outdated and inefficient heating and cooling systems. So ventilation is very important for healthy classrooms and also for working conditions for our teachers and our staff who work in our schools every day. Next slide. Continuing on with our funding priorities, it's also looking at asbestos and lead abatement and removal, looking at repairing, replacing deteriorating, I don't know why I'm having a hard time with that word, it's the hour, I guess, I'm sorry, 30, 30-year-old or older portable classrooms. Portable classrooms are meant to be portable, they're meant to be for 10 years. Most of ours have been around for longer than 30 years. It's also looking at improving earthquake and fire safety within our campuses. And finally, the last on the list is to update aging science labs and classrooms, really to meet our educational standards. I will note that the proposed measure, the measure is entirely focused on student spaces, spaces that students are spending their time during the day. There's nothing around administrative buildings or spaces, and we can talk about that on the next slide. So important here is that with a bond measure, a local bond measure, all of the funds are locally controlled, and they stay right here in our community, they go only to our local schools. There's a requirement of an independent citizens oversight committee, committee that includes annual audits and public disclosure of all spending. We have a similar oversight committee for the Measure M parcel tax that the district has. No funds can be taken away by the state. None of the funds can be used for salary benefits or any expenses other than directly the projects that we've outlined within the measure. None of the funds can be used for workforce housing or district administrative buildings, and that is explicitly spelled out in our ballot measure. So state matching funds, you may have heard on the ballot, also in November, there is a statewide K-12 facility bond measure. And so if that bond measure passes, it's important to note that the only way the district has any access to those state dollars is if we have local matching dollars. So in some cases, the match is 50/50, in some cases, it's 60/40, depending on the type of projects that we would be applying for. But in some cases, the district will contribute $2 for every, I'm sorry, the state contributes $2 for every local dollar provided, and that's in the case of hardship or seismic. We have plenty of projects that will fall within that. And the only way that we have access, again, to those state dollars is if we have a local match. So some people have said, why are you going in November of '24? This is a terrible time. It's probably never a good time to go out for any kind of tax increase. However, this is the only time that we'll have access to those matching dollars, and so it's a bit of a two-for-one deal at this point. I like to say, what's the favorite store here in PvP USD? If you talk to someone around my age, they say TJ Maxx. If you talk to a kid, they say Five Below. Either way, we like a good bargain, and this is the bargain that we get this year around the state matching funds. Next slide. So we'd love for our community to stay, stay informed, share your input. You can visit the bond page that we have on the website. You can provide feedback, there's a QR code. You can also contact me directly. I'd be happy to have a conversation or respond to any questions you may have, an email. And I know our board would also be willing to engage with anyone interested. If you want to say anything else?
Sure. This is actually my family's 10-year anniversary of living here in Rancho Palos Verdes. 10 years ago, I was a physi, completing my training at UCLA. My husband was a brand-new doctor. We couldn't afford anything up here. And then we found out a local traveling nurse had to get out of a lease really fast. And we were like, we signed the lease without seeing the properties, a tiny home on Monero. It was our first property that we rented here in Rancho Palos Verdes, and we felt like the luckiest people on earth because our daughter was entering kindergarten. And it was our goal to make sure she would start on the right foot with a PvP USD education. And, and I know for most and many families on the hill, our schools, along with the beautiful views and the trails, the schools really are the main draw for families. And families work really hard to be able to live up here. And it's really important that we maintain these schools. My daughter joins, and I notice it's raining inside the classroom. Why is it raining inside our classrooms? So as a parent, I joined the facilities advisory committee and learned firsthand, the state does not have a funding stream for classroom repairs, as Dr. Serrano pointed out. It is a bit absurd, and yes, it's frustrating, and yes, we want to yell and scream and demand better. And all of those things need to happen, but they will take a lot of time. Our school board does not take it lightly to ask people to consider a tax increase. We understand it'll be a burden to many people, but we have done everything we can to exhaust every other option. We have looked into applying for every state opportunity, like Cal Shape, to address some of our HVAC needs. We've also applied through our local congress member to get a congressionally-funded project to also help with our utilities at one of our sites. We've looked at everything we can out of the box and pushing back on the state, but none of that will give us enough money and not fast enough to make sure our kids are safe in the immediate years ahead. And the catastrophe that we experienced this year at Mira Lest, we're going to be looking at more catastrophes like that, where we have a school site shut down, learning loss for students, which is critical, and then running a generator, which is gouging our general fund. I think it's 150,000 a month we are spending out of our general fund right now to keep the generator going. The board took this very seriously. I encourage the community to go back and watch the recordings. We spent a lot of time debating the right tax amount to ask our voters for. We went back and forth and tried to create consensus and put forth a ballot measure we thought would earn this community's support. And I have faith in my neighbors. I know our neighbors love and appreciate our schools and understand that some taxes are necessary investments, like ensuring that our kids can learn safely and that they don't learn, they don't lose days of learning. So I appreciate the council's willingness to consider this resolution. I hope that you will consider supporting it unanimously to signal to our school or students that they matter to all of us. Thank you so much for, for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for you both being here. There might be a few, I know I have a few questions, but...
Comments, no questions, and I'm willing to listen to the speakers when you're ready.
Do you have any questions of the speakers?
I have comments.
Oh, very good. Okay, well, I have a couple of questions. I guess the first one, you mentioned about the, the $10 billion California school bond that's on the ballot as well. Are matching funds contingent upon that passing, or will you still get matching funds if your bond passes and that bond does not pass?
So we won't have matching funds, but we would have local funds. So the local funds would still be here for the, the facilities improvement projects that we've outlined within the resolution. But on top of that, we would have the matching funds if the state bond passes, if that makes sense.
No, it does. I mean, in other words, that would have to pass to get those matching funds that you talked about.
Correct.
Okay, and then are you going to be requiring project labor agreements?
I, I need to look into that. I'm not sure what the requirements are or what we've agreed to within the bond terms. I would need to follow up with my, with that department.
Okay. Do, do you know Board Member Dean, or do you remember?
Can you repeat the question?
The project labor agreements requiring that all the contractors basically be union contractors.
I, I have a hunch, but I don't want to say it because I'm not 100% sure on that one.
We can get back to you on that.
Okay, because that's kind of important to me. But anyhow, that, that would be my questions. Thank you very much for, it's already 10:10, and I don't know how late the school board meetings go, they probably go later, right?
Sometimes later, but usually not the night before the first day of school.
Fair enough. Well, thank you so much for the presentation and that, and I think we have public comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Jennifer Jordan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dear Mayor, I've lost my voice sitting here all night, but, Dear Mayor, City Council members and staff, I'm here tonight to ask you not to endorse school, the school bond on behalf of the Rancho Palos Verdes City Council. This is a massive, ill-conceived, and poorly-planned $289 million school bond that will cost every property owner in our small peninsula community, including senior citizens and those on fixed income, more than half a billion dollars. This massive school bond will put all PV property owners in debt for decades, and this debt is so large, it will be passed on to our children and likely our grandchildren. The proposed bond is six times larger than the combined last three school bonds approved by PV voters, including myself. And we are still paying for those school bonds. Those school bonds updated all of our schools, including new electrical, new plumbing, new piping, roofing, everything that's on this list, 2001 to do 2004 and 2002, as recently as 2014. This is unprecedented massive debt, which means residential apartment and commercial landlords will be forced to raise rents and store owners will be forced to raise prices. If you want to endorse this kind of massive debt at a time when families and businesses are struggling, then please do so personally, as an individual, just as you do when you personally endorse a school board candidate. Please give your endorsement as an individual, not as our entire city council, on behalf of everyone in the city of Rancho PV. I appreciate each of you and your significant amount of time volunteered to our city. You have a huge responsibility and must represent not just your wishes or the wishes of a political party. You are here to represent the wishes and interests of all RPV residents. So with the greatest respect, please let me remind you that in 2020, the residents of RPV overwhelmingly voted against Measure PV, 62% to 38%. 62% of voters said no to the, to the same kind of massive bond and unfair tax burden. Finally, when parts of our city are literally sliding into the ocean, should our city council really be making this type of financial endorsement? I, I was really unaware of what my neighbors were going through, the extent of it, and I sat through all of it tonight. And I can't believe that the superintendent, who I look forward to meeting with, they're tone deaf. I guess that ends it.
You can finish your thought.
Our city's in crisis. Our, our country's in crisis. Prices are through the roof. This is just not the time. What would be more appropriate is a small bond, handle, handle one project at a time. This school district spent $10 million of the last bond, completely renovating the Malaga Cove school site with seismic ADA, elevators, the finest of materials, and it's air conditioning, brand-new fields, beautifully landscaped. And instead of putting our children in that school, they moved their administrative offices. It is just beyond.
All right, now, now you're going to wrap it up.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you so much.
That's my, that's my biggest complaint.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Elliot Levy via Zoom.
I'd like to, just a minute. I wanted to ask her a question.
Could you come back up? I have a question for you.
Do you still have children in the school district?
I do.
Okay.
And I volunteered thousands of hours and thousands of dollars, and I love the school district, and I voted for the last three bonds. I did not vote for Measure PV, it was too big, and I can't support this bond either.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elliot Levy via Zoom.
Good evening, Elliot.
Good evening. Thank you all for taking time to discuss this important measure tonight on the eve of the first day of school. My kids are asleep now, but very excited to start tomorrow. When you ask residents why they move to our city, undoubtedly, I think they'll mention three areas, which very fittingly were all on the agenda for your meeting tonight. One is the views, two is the safety, and three is the schools. I'm a proud father of those two students thriving in those schools with amazing teachers and administrators, but they're also coping with decrepit, crumbling school buildings. Our schools were built 60 years ago, and much like homes on the hill are built during that time, the plumbing, electrical, and structural components have started to fail if they've not been upgraded. Campuses experience regular sewage backups, HVAC systems break down, and electrical systems are inadequate for today's technology needs. I recently toured Mira Lest Intermediate, and as you heard, the entire electrical system broke down there in January, and the school is still running on a massive diesel generator. The locker rooms also smelled terrible because of sewage problems, and there was water pooling in many spots around campus, creating safety hazards. It's embarrassing to have such a beautiful community with schools in such poor condition. The cost for this bond, which I think has been very well negotiated, would average about $25 a month for the typical homeowner on the peninsula. Frankly, there's a big problem if someone living in a home worth over $1 million, as nearly all of our homes are, can't afford $25 a month to keep our schools strong and safe. And of course, seniors who have lived in their homes for decades enjoyed that tax benefit under Prop 13 that would make their contributions to this bond much lower than that $25 a month. Another impact of Prop 13 is that the only legal method for California school districts to fund building upgrades is to pass a bond. Passing a bond will also allow us to access matching funds from the state. I don't want to lose our tax dollars to fund repairs in other school districts that have passed bond. It's time for PV to catch up and get our share. The most common point raised by opponents of the council taking a position on this measure appears to be that they think you should avoid taking a position on public policy issues. I find that argument really weak, as this council routinely supports legislations and policies that affect the city and its residents, including lobbying and advocating for public funding to support our city. As respected leaders in our community, I'm asking you to continue that tradition of advocating on behalf of the residents of our city and support this crucial bond measure. Pursuing this bond was a necessary and unanimous decision by the school board. That school board includes members as politically diverse as liberal advocate Dr. Dean to Fox News pundit Julie Hammel. Their unanimous support for this measure was a great moment of overcoming political differences to recognize that this bond is necessary while structured and reflects important compromises to address concerns raised by residents. As Board Member Hammel noted when she spoke in support of this bond measure, if the district doesn't get these funds, then they will have to start closing schools. That would be a tremendous loss for our city, and I hope you will take action tonight to encourage voters to keep our community's schools open, safe, and competitive. Thank you all so much for listening to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks for the, the comments to the public as well. Yeah, and I also want to thank Dr. Dean, Board Member Dean, as well as Dr. Serrano for being with us this evening, well into the evening. I, I think Mr. Levy just said it pretty well of some of the points that I was going to make, which is, there are people that provided public commentary prior to this meeting that we didn't hear from, leading up to this discussion, who really expressed the desire for the council not to take a position. People I respect, people I admire, but I ultimately, similar with what, what Mr. Levy just said, feel strongly that we do have a consistent pattern as a council to take a position on issues that are impactful to our community. That's what we've done on lots of legislation. And what could be more important than taking a position on an issue that is critical to the investment in our most important asset in this community, which is our children? So to me, I do think this council should take a position. I think this is an opportunity for our city to show support for a bond that's desperately needed, as has been expressed. I share some of the critiques that have been shared about, you know, the prior bond and the repositioning of the request in this particular bond as well. And I think Dr. Serrano's commentary about the oversight that would accompany an approved bond would hopefully allay what could... bond would hopefully allay what could be some major concerns about, you know, what's going to happen should this bond pass. I, too, don't, I'm very sensitive to, you know, asking our voters to approve any additional taxes. In fact, this would be the first time in my seven years on city council that I've supported something that would be a significant tax increase for anyone. We've done nothing but either freeze fees or taxes or reduce taxes over the last several years. So, I really want to point to that record with pride and say that, in my opinion, this particular bond is needed, and this is an opportunity for our community. I think the resolution's clearly written. I know that we're just this evening talking about a resolution for the city, but I'm hopeful that the other three cities will look at potentially a resolution for coming out of our city and consider that they, too, could lend some support into the discussion for the community. We're four cities and one school district, but we're really one community when you consider us as a whole. So, ultimately, I think we should be supportive of the bond. I think we should help. I did have a chance to meet with Assemblymember Mirasucci and some of the bond committee members a couple of weeks ago, and they're citizens, just like all of us, who are dedicating their time to trying to get information out about what this is and why it's needed. This is an opportunity this evening for us to put a little bit of a spotlight on that and make sure that we're highlighting that this is needed and send that signal. So, those are my comments at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Farrar.
Okay, I'd like to say welcome to the council meeting. You've certainly gotten an earful tonight, haven't you? As a former teacher, or as a teacher in the district, there have been days when I just went into my room and sort of hunkered down and tried not to think about that either it was too cold or too hot. And one day, I had the superintendent come to my room, and he looked around and he said, "How many fans do you have going?" Because it was a really hot day. And I had 16 fans going, 16, mind you, to try and get it to a livable level so that I could teach and so the kids could learn. And that's just one little example. And I know I don't want to, I mean, I understand why you say no, and you don't want to advocate more taxes, but at $25 a month, that would take care of the $300. I mean, that's pretty much what it costs me when my granddaughter goes to Starbucks. And I don't know if I can get her to give up Starbucks for, so I can pay that per month, but I think that the value that we will get out of getting this passed now is just, it's far too important to not go for it. I mean, it may not work anyway. There may be enough people to vote no to defeat it, but I think it's really needed. I know it's really needed from my own experience, and so I'm willing to support it. And let's see, what did I say? Because of, I don't know. But those are basically my notes on it, that it's too important for us to not get behind this. And I know that there's a lot going on in our city. And is there a provision for someone to not pay this if they opt out, or this is just going to be a requirement of everyone?
Everyone. All property owners.
There is no opt-out for a bond measure, so it would be for all.
Okay, not unless you write it into the bond.
It's illegal to do that with a local bond measure. It is permissible for a parcel tax, but that's different. So, our parcel tax does have an opt-out for seniors, and so that is something, just to make clear that we do that annually. They come in and opt out of the parcel tax measure if they are 65 or older, but for a local bond measure, that is not permissible under the law.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. But like I said, you know, at $25 a month, I think I can skip Starbucks once in a while and manage it. And I just know how valuable it is because, having taught it in the district for the last 20-plus years, and even at the high school, which was newer than the one I had left, it still had so many things that needed to be repaired, and I'm definitely going to support this.
Okay, well, it sounds like I'm going to be in the minority here in regards to that. And I do have an opportunity to not vote for any tax increases or bonds. Honestly, I do agree that the schools need repairs. I don't think anyone disagrees, but I also believe, just having gone through Elidira Lindiscenter at just south of probably $15 million and how much struggles that was just for our city staff, I look at a $300 million bond, and I don't know if our school district's ready for that. I don't think they are. I heard before that we were going to pursue something much less so that we could kind of get some sea legs and do that, but we're going for the whole $300 million at this point, and to me, that's too much at this point, and senior citizens can't opt out. Inflation has been a nightmare for people, and so I can't in good conscience support it. Also, our city council has never really supported something specific like this, so I don't feel comfortable. Plus, we don't have two of our other colleagues here tonight, so it's just the three of us sitting here. I had earlier felt that maybe we could talk about it in another meeting, but honestly, when the other two are here, I think I would still be on the losing side of what I'm going to say. So, I know a motion's going to be made. I'm not going to support it. I think it's too big at this point. I don't think the city council should necessarily be weighing in on this. I don't know if there's project labor agreements, and I definitely won't support it if there are project labor agreements. I hope there are not, because that will definitely squander much of our tax dollars and bond money. And also, there was, one of the speakers took a somewhat cheap shot at a friend, Julie Hammel, about Fox News funded. She doesn't get paid for that, by the way, so she goes on there because she loves her community. So, I hope that people have a good, kind heart when they talk about people in public and make sure they have facts about people before they mention things like that. So, with that, I'll go ahead and leave it if there's a potential motion here.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could just point something out, if there is not a three-person vote, this doesn't pass. You need a majority of the body to pass ordinances and resolutions at the city council level.
Okay, so we might need to wait anyhow.
So, in light of that...
That means that we really can't vote on it tonight.
Yeah, in light of that, what I would do is, I don't know if I need a formal motion, but continue the item until September 3, I believe, is which is our next city council meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, you would need a motion to continue it.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to continue the consideration of the resolution to the September 3 meeting, where I believe we're going to have both Member Bradley and Member Seo present.
Second.
All right.
Councilwoman Farraro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alegría?
Yes.
Mayor Christiane?
No.
So, then it'll be on our...
And the motion passes.
Agenda...
September 3.
September 3.
Okay. Yeah, the motion to continue does pass on a majority of the three of you.
Yep. And just one last time, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just again, I want to thank Dr. Serrano and Board Member Dean for coming out to talk about this. Hopefully, the public, as we prepare for reconsideration of the resolution in September, can educate themselves as well on what's being considered. Thank you.
Next item.
Are the future agenda items?
Any future agenda items?
Lord knows, don't we have enough?
Good point. Same thing, okay. That was good. Should have had that humor early on when the video was having an issue.
Oh.
That's funny. Next item.
City council oral reports.
All right. Councilmember Farrar, any oral reports?
No.
Okay.
I'll forward all my report till the next meeting.
You guys are no fun. All right, so just, I'll be very quick. I attended a mayor's innovation project in Knoxville. I'm going to put together a full debrief for my council member colleagues and let you know what I learned. Great stuff. I talked about the letter to Elon Musk, and just as a follow-up, his Tesla energy team, we're going to be meeting, first meeting on Friday. So, of course, you guys will, hopefully, we get some progress there. And we've also had other companies reach out to us with their battery solutions as well, so we're getting some traction from the private sector. The 12th of August, I attended the South Bay City Council Government Transportation and Steering Committee meetings. I know that there's some asks of our public works. They're looking at old projects to make sure we're still good. I think we are still good with all our funding projects through the COG. On the 15th, I attended a, with the city attorney and with our community development director, and Ara was on the phone. We attended a Clipper Road residents' meeting in regards to the zoning that's there. And I had, I attended the Pacific View HOA block party. Of course, I got there too late to enjoy the tacos that they always have. And then Mayor Protem and I had an event on Sunday for District Attorney candidate Nathan Hockman, and so that was great. A lot of the people in the community were there, and actually, Councilmember Farrar was there as well. So, the three of us were there and enjoyed hearing from the candidate. So, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.